No, not for number eight.
Okay, we're ready to go. Yay. Okay, we'll start with our meeting and I'd like to thank you all for being here. This is a meeting, an official meeting of the Board of Supervisors and I know we're going to hear from the Mayor of Santa Paula to welcome us after we call to order and do the roll call and the pledge, so we'll do that. And great to be here, sorry for the little delay. So let's have our roll calls. Mr. Palmer.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisors are...
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Thank you.
And please introduce the staff up here too, yourselves. Leroy?
You're a resident county council.
I'm Ferg County Audit Controller.
And Brian Palmer, the chief deputy clerk of the board.
Gabriela Cervician, deputy clerk of the board.
All right, thank you. And you? Well, you were gonna get a chance to talk. All right, so that's our roll call. All right, now will please join me as we welcome the, for the Pledge of Allegiance, the Santa Paula Boy Scouts Troop 304 are going to lead us in our pledge and posting of the colors.
Scout salute, or not. Scouts, please advance the colors. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Scouts, post the colors.
Thank you, Scout Troop 304, thank you. Okay, now we will go to our minutes of the meeting of our prior board meeting on October 6. Are there... Okay, yeah, we'll have to speak to, who's doing the motion? Supervisor Zaragoza put a motion, Supervisor Bennett, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, thank you. Mr. CEO, agenda review?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no changes.
Yay, that's easy.
Look at that, I know.
All right. Now we're going to do the moment of inspiration and I'll be calling you up soon, Mr. Mayor, but first we have the pleasure of having Reverend Jenny Crosswhite here and she is a, one of our local faith community leaders and also council member here in Santa Paula. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. I'll make it brief, I know that we're running a little bit late, but people who know me know that I like to ask questions and I won't make you answer, but I want you to think about what was it that inspired you to run? I just recently, a year ago, ran for city council and this week as I was thinking about the moment of inspiration, I was thinking about what inspired me to run and so I thought I would ask you to think about what was it that inspired you to run? You know, usually you either are inspired by negative or positive things and so you're either, you know, people are either, there's been, there's an impending natural disaster, we should be inspired to get ready for, you know, the, something, some sort of a natural disaster that could happen, emergency preparedness, or we're inspired because we think about what could be. And so it could be that there was a mixture of the things that you saw that were wrong and the things that you wanted to see for the good of your individual communities and the good of the county. And so as you're making decisions, even today, and even though that you've been doing it for a long time, I would encourage you to think about those things that inspired you to run, especially the positive ones. The things that you want to see for our county, the things that you want to see for our communities. I know that here in Santa Paula, we have a great community, we have challenges, but I am inspired by the, every time that I see the community come together. The community stand up and say, "We want this to be what our community looks like." Because I am heartbroken when I see, two years ago, we had, we have an event that's called Hands Across Santa Paula and at that event, children are asked to do artwork around a theme and two years ago, it was their hopes for their parents and their teachers. And the thing, you know, you would think, "Oh, I hope that we go on a vacation or something," but they were, they were heartbreaking, some of them, they were things like, "I wish that my parents were around in the evening to have dinner with me." "I wish that my parents didn't have to work all the time so we could go on a vacation." "I wish that my dad didn't have to work on the weekend." "I wish that, you know, we, we had enough money for Christmas presents." There were, there were just all kinds of very heartbreaking things from the mouths of our children. And I think about those things all of the time and I think those are indicators and we need to really invest in especially our children because they are the ones that aren't just our future, but they are a part of our present. And so as we vote as electeds, let us not forget the people who helped us to get here because none of us gets where we are by ourselves. We had people who mentored us. I know we have one person on our city council whose kindergarten teacher is here in the room. Kindergarten teachers affect and inspire who we become. Our parents affect and inspire who we become. As we mentor youth, as we invest in our communities, we inspire those who will come behind us, who will be the next ones to sit in these chairs and to make decisions that will inspire those who are to come. So may we remember what it was that inspired us to run as you make decisions here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Well said, well said. And it is very thoughtful, thank you. Now we have quickly our consent agenda items and that's just item 11 and 12. Any questions on those two items, the board members? We have a motion and a second on approval, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All right, that was easy. Now, now we'll have Mayor John Proctor, Mayor of the fine city of Santa Paula.
First off, thank you for coming, it's great to have you, Chair Long, and all the supervisors. I don't know, having me follow Ms. Crosswhite is a real tough act to follow, but I have to make notice something she said, right here in the front row is Marion Toffro, my kindergarten teacher.
Oh, yay.
You can't imagine what a thrill it is when you have your kindergarten teacher supporting you during elections and coming out and doing things.
Should we ask you what you were like when you were in kindergarten or less?
Well, right now I was gonna ask her if I could take a nap, but, so, anyway, I'm gonna make it very brief, thank you for coming out and I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors, some of you weren't here, but Santa Paula's gonna be eternally grateful for the unanimous support that brought our hospital back and for that, thank the County of Ventura and also the strong support from, from Supervisor Long, but what was most impressive to me was it was unanimous and that supervisors from all over the county supported rather than, you know, just protecting their own interest and we are eternally grateful. And with that, I'm gonna leave it at that and let, let the games begin, we have timed certain items that are running late, right?
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
And John, I would just say, Kathy and I sit on that oversight board of the hospital, but the community has embraced this hospital and has really done the part, Mr. Powers can tell you without that, without them embracing what is here, this wouldn't be here. So thank you.
Thank you, and I meant to say that, that once you guys gave the approval, it's on us to help keep it going.
And it's very healthy, thank you, John. And always a pleasure with a different hat on also is the Vice Mayor of Santa Paula, Martine Hernandez, good to see you, Martine. Okay, I have public comment cards and this is, I'll start with as received. Rose, Rose Coglan, I'm not reading the, thank you, sorry, Rose. And we'll try to go with five minutes, no more than that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, hello, and I'm used to watching you on television because I'm actually from LA is where my business is and my name is Rose Coghlan, I'm in the environmental health and safety business and I have been for 30 years. I'm self-employed, but I've worked for the oil industry, the energy industry, law firms, landowners, et cetera, and when the explosion occurred in November of 2014, I immediately reached out to a local journalist here in Santa Paula because I could not believe what I was seeing and how little press it was getting. So as I've watched over the months of this unfolding, first of all, kudos to Jeff Berry, he did an amazing job with his, with his search warrants, but as I read his search warrants, I could tell that he was somebody who had street smarts and that very early on, I could tell that he could tell that these people weren't being honest and that he needed to, to kick into gear, so the fact that that investigative group that's there now, I guess since 2012 formulated the way it was, I want to commend you on that. But as a, as a person who's watching on and wondering why this isn't getting more attention, I'm sure that because it's in the DA's hands, but for the community, I would hope that there is a way in which the citizens of Santa Paula particularly can monitor what's going on in terms of the, of the condition of the site and whether or not there's, the site is being investigated for contamination because of the number of years that it operated and because of some of the things that were in the search warrant, the fact that they were burying waste in pipes and then concreting them in. The other thing is, is to make sure that there is a way in which these things can be, can be found out ahead of time. One of the things about Ventura is interesting, is I take, I have a safety certificate that I have to get and the man that teaches it actually lives in Ventura County and he speaks about how uncomfortable he is to live here because of some of the things that he sees at some of the facilities. So I think that this was something that was bound to happen and I'm really thankful that there wasn't a fatality, but I also understand that there are some firefighters from this community that probably will never go back to work. So I am, I'm asking us some resolutions that there actually be some people from the community that are able to monitor what's going on in terms of the investigation, because I understand the DA has to do what they have to do in terms of the criminal investigation, but I mean as far as this facility still being in the community and potentially still being contaminated, I think that it's important because there could be things in underground tanks that could probably cause some of the same reactions. And I did forward the information as I got it to members of the, of the, of the safety community and I got comments like, "You better hope that a terrorist doesn't figure out what they mixed together because there was, it was pretty remarkable what happened." And, and the fact that they were shocked by the fact that nine people were arrested because that never happens, so you need to be commended on the fact that you're doing that because that is the best deterrent to these kinds of operation is that there, there be convictions. And the thing about the convictions is, I will hope that if they are found criminally liable, that this doesn't keep the insurance company from paying so that the stakeholders can be made whole.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, supervisors. My name is Kathy Hicks and I live here in Santa Paula. My concern is that since the County of Ventura has taken over Santa Paula Hospital, accepts Blue Cross Insurance. I do not understand why the emergency room doctors only accept Medi-Cal and Medicare, leaving people with other medical insurances to go to community hospital in Ventura. My Blue Cross Insurance has offered to work with the doctors, but so far has not accepted their offer. My husband has worked all his adult life in the agriculture community. They pay high premiums for their policy, but if an emergency happens, Ventura Medical Center, emergency room doctors will not accept our plan. We are considered out of network and they'll only pay 70% of our bill. On a thousand dollar bill, it comes that they will pay $600 and we will have to pay the other 400. Emergency room doctors are then expecting us to then make $50 a month payments on our bills. Currently, we have six bills that are over $400 each. They are requiring us to make a $300 a month payment just for an ER visit bill, for the ER visit bills. Something has to change. It doesn't seem fair that I pay high premiums and then I have to go to community hospital to use my insurance. I'd like to be able to use Santa Paula Hospital. I have infusion therapy that can now only be done at community hospital because the cost of the ER doctors at Santa Paula Hospital are over a thousand dollars. It'd be nice to be able to have the procedure done at home here in Santa Paula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, and I, I know you've reached out and we have, are in communications and working with our healthcare agency to try and resolve that issue with the emergency room. There are a group of doctors that we contract with, so we are trying to work through that as, and as soon as we can, the better, I'm sure. Thank you for speaking. Mr. Powers, anything to add?
We appreciate those comments because this is your community hospital and we generally accept all forms of insurance in the ER, so this will be fixed quickly, definitely. And I also like to ask Mr. Fisher, the agency director, to follow up with you on, on your, your payments as well, see what we can do there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Rudman?
Good evening, supervisors and fellow Ventura County residents. My name is Richard Rudman, I'm a homeowner in Santa Paula and operate a small business here. I'm a member of the Santa Paula Citizens Corps. The mission of Citizens Corps, it's a FEMA-inspired national program, is to work with every individual in our community through education, training, and volunteer services to make communities safer, stronger, better prepared to respond to threats of terrorism, crime, public health issues, and disasters of all kinds. We're leveraging the efforts of programs like Neighborhood Watch, CERT, and building liaisons with our local schools, the Red Cross, the clergy, our fire, police departments, our local elected officials, service organizations, businesses, and as many of our citizens as possible. I'm also a member of a group called Citizens for Safer Santa Paula. We came together last year to support our small but dedicated cadre of local first responders and to improve the city infrastructure they and we all rely on. My mission today is to tell you our county's elected leaders that through these efforts and more, Santa Paula is coming together to help itself in the face of budget constraints and overwhelming obstacles. These obstacles include, but are not limited to, the homeless encampment in our riverbed, a large number of resident parole gang members, the challenge of integrating East Area 1 into our community, an undersized police department, a fire department that needs help to keep up with growth, and an aging infrastructure of city roads and underground pipelines. So how can you help? For one thing, Santa Paula has a vast unrealized travel destination potential that can add to the already legendary tourist attractions in Ventura County based on our local heritage of agricultural and aeronautical milestones. We hope that our county will do more than merely assuring that Santa Paula will now get its fair share of county resources to support our local attractions. We also need our county to actively work with us on a wide range of what I would call creative destination investments that will help us to better help you. We have a city council that has promised Santa Paulans they will make better efforts to reach out to you for both our fair share of county resources and, as I said, to partner on mutually beneficial opportunities. We are holding them to their promise. We're also looking to you, the elected leadership of our county, to call for new Ventura County Planning Commission hearings on our city's future. We need a new direction for Santa Paula other than those suggested by the landfill on Tolan Road, jail construction, and a sewage treatment facility. With all due respect, we cannot dump or incarcerate our way to a brighter future for our city. Thank you for this opportunity to open the doors wider for participation and partnership for Santa Paula and the future of Ventura County.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy.
Good evening and welcome to Santa Paula, I'm Sherri Hamlin, I live in Santa Paula and I write for Citizens Journal, I've been following the wonderful work you're doing on the general plan, it's really outstanding. I have been doing more research and I downloaded a letter and I was hoping you could clarify something, I don't quite understand the protocol. It was written by Supervisor Long to the CEC, the California Energy Commission, on August 26th, it's about the Puente project. I'm trying to understand if this letter is from Supervisor Long or is it from the entire board because it's not clear in the format that it's written in? And secondly, in the penultimate paragraph, it mentions the location that's due west of us here, the Calpine Project, and I parsed these sentences very carefully and I got the distinct impression that that might be a favored location and again, I'm trying to understand if that is your thinking or whether that's the whole board and if you could just help me understand this.
Sure, I'd be happy to talk to you anytime about that letter, that was just from me.
Okay.
Okay, and I'd be happy to talk to you anytime about it.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Donna Hayner.
Thank you. My comments were addressed by the first speaker on the explosion in Santa Paula and I don't have anything to add, but I do want to reiterate that we are concerned in this community about investigation, culpability, about oversight, and how this kind of thing can be prevented and how the citizens can recover any expenses incurred in the process.
Okay, thank you. I'll speak to that a little later, be happy to. Devin Chausky, Chausky. See, I don't know everybody in Santa Paula, I'm sorry. Sometimes it's first name.
Thank you, my name's Devin Chausky, I'm a resident here in Santa Paula, thank you for being here tonight. Most of my comments were addressed by Richard Rudman. I'm here on behalf of Citizens for Safer Santa Paula and forgive me if I'm a little nervous, I'm pinch hitting for our usual speaker, but we're a group that came together last year because we were concerned about escalating crime rates, especially violent crime rates in Santa Paula. We worked very hard together on Measure F, the sales tax measure that was going to fund police, fire, and roads here, and although that measure wasn't ultimately successful, we did garner almost 60% of the vote. And what that told us is that there are a lot of people here in Santa Paula who care very, very much about this issue and we still do. So we're here tonight just to encourage you that as you are making your decisions about county programs and county facilities and where to cite them, that you keep in mind how those decisions can help address the problems that we have here in Santa Paula and contribute to the future that we all would like to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Audrey Vincent, good to see you, Audrey, welcome.
Thank you. And welcome, all of you, to Santa Paula.
Okay.
It's great to have you here this evening. It's an opportunity to come before and ask questions that are uncomfortable, but many of us feel need to be asked. This is in regard to the November 14th explosion west of town on, I believe, county property. This is from Nina Ramisberger, who is recuperating from having been struck by an automobile six weeks ago. She's in Vista Cove and she knew you were coming and she asks this. Has the exact composition and combination of toxic ingredients causing the explosions been revealed? If not, why not? Second question, could the severity of the whole ordeal been easily circumvented if the many complaints of the neighbors had been listened to and followed up on? And then her third question, what guarantees do we as citizens of Santa Paula have that this kind of accident will never happen again? And someone, Donna, I believe, referred to oversight and accountability, that's in there also. And I am also curious and have deep concern about the firemen or how are they coming along, the recuperation, and is there some way that we can support them as a community and as a county? And then I was emailed this, and I'll give you copies of these, message from Catherine Benner, who lives in Santa Paula and she teaches in Santa Barbara and was unable to be here, and she would like to know what the chemicals were and if there's an ongoing danger to our soil and groundwater. And also, has the site really been cleaned up? When? If not? And what are the symptoms of contamination? Her questions remind me that this is in fact a farming community and we are proud of the depth of the topsoil here and would like to see industries compatible with agriculture and hope that that can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. There are no further public comment cards at this time. Anyone else? There might be on separate items, but, okay. All right. Thank you, Audrey. That then concludes the public comments and I'll go to board comments and if I might, board members, I'd like to go first, because I would like to address just some of the comments made tonight, some of which, one I appreciate always hearing, I, I think the, the citizens of this community have always been actively engaged and have been strong advocates for things they care about, things that they want questions and answers for and, and that is really what your elected leadership should do their very best to provide you. And I know both working closely with the city council and the mayor and the vice mayor and council members, but also through the county, that we, we do try to bring out the best in services and programs to this community and, but to specifically address a couple of things raised tonight, the one for the Citizens for Safe Santo, Safer Santa Paula and the need for county programs and services out here. You'll hear some tonight, I think, of what we actually both have on the ground in Santa Paula, but also what we envision bringing more to Santa Paula. Paula, but also what we envision bringing more to Santa Paula. And then we really, there is truly a, programs that are being worked on right now, thought of bringing out to Santa Paula and working with members in the community to advance them. Certainly on the Santa Clara wastewater explosion and that incident, it's, as has been said, it is clearly in the district attorney's court at this time. All the information that was gathered by the district attorney and has been put out is all that I'm sure is going to be put out at this point. It's in the legal process. As was said, there were nine individuals arrested. Our environmental health has been fully engaged on that site. Some, Mr. CEO, if I speak wrong, please speak up and correct me. But there has been some cleanup of the site. To answer the question, what were the things that were mixed together, there's some known and unknown. I can't tell you tonight clearly everything that occurred there and the ingredients that resulted in that. There's certainly been some speculation. It is not county-owned property. It is privately owned and that wastewater company has been in business for close to 50 years. You know, obviously there was, well, not obviously because I am not an attorney nor in the DA's office, but there was some actions that took place there that created the explosion. And it appears that there were some illegal actions that took place there. But until that is fully investigated and the DA comes out with what are the next steps, there's really not a lot more we can say. The Environmental Health Department has, again, been overseeing the cleanup of the site and certainly will make further inquiries following comments that were said tonight to see if there's anything we're missing, anything more we should do. And pending that, if there's more information that I can share with the community, I certainly will do that. I will get out to your council and make sure that you provided that information. But my understanding right now is that it is being overseen by environmental health. Mr. Powers, anything I've missed?
The EPA was involved in the cleanup as well and oversight and it's been transferred back to the Environmental Health Department for oversight and it has been cleaned up. And if we have some additional information on the actual mixture of chemicals, we'll share that with you too. I think we have some information on that. Make sure we get that to you.
Okay. So, and as my understanding, and I'll look to the mayor, your firefighters, I understand that they certainly did suffer some disabling conditions from that response. And that is as much as I know of their condition. Anything, John?
We all have concern, but because of HIPAA rules, we haven't been apprised of everything.
Yeah. Thank you.
But it was certainly serious for at least two of them.
Right. I know the firefighter family, which is county-wide, embraced them and their families to offer all the help and assistance they can to them and their families. I heard certainly that. So, anything else under the public comments side? Board members wanted to add anything? Okay. All right. Back to my board comments then. I invited tonight because I wanted to recognize them, them being, again, volunteer, good residents of Santa Paula, who have now been recognized for their historical preservation efforts, garnering top honors in the national contest, beating out 39 other communities, including Calabasas, Aurora Grande, and Lexington, Kentucky. And that is the America in Bloom Contest. And they were recognized, they organized by the city as a chapter, Committee of Local Volunteers. And I know that all of the residents here appreciate what wonderful work they do to make Santa Paula such a beautiful city, particularly in the downtown area, but elsewhere, that they take pride in making sure that Santa Paula has all of the beautiful natural things that surround this community, but also in this recognition. And I wanted to invite Diane and Dudley Davis up in the audience to receive a certificate from the Board of Supervisors to kudos and applaud them for American Bloom Outstanding Achievement Award that was recognized nationally for them, for their advocacy, and the strong work of all the volunteers who have made Santa Paula such a beautiful place to live, work, and play. I'm going to step down to present this to you. And I don't see Kay Wilson-Bolton here. She usually pops in on these, but just so, if you didn't know, Kay was honored by the Champions of Home Awards, California Association of Realtors, as one of the champions for Realtors for her work with the homeless here in Santa Paula. And she was recognized. That's a recognition by her peers and that was pretty significant. I was very proud of her. I did get to see her earlier and congratulate her, but she did receive that recognition. And I'd also like to acknowledge that there was a recent 40th Annual Medal of Valor Award Ceremony took place last Saturday. And the Santa Paula Police Department recipients for that Medal of Valor were Captain Walter Harper, Officer Hector Ramirez, Officer Scott Varner, Officer Frank Huerta, Officer Damian Shiloh, and Officer Chad Peplinsky. And they were recognized for their bravery and service to the residents of Santa Paula and congratulations to them. Very proud of them. And, board members, I have one adjourned memory list to present for our clerk for the record and just to call out one of them, and that's Jack M. Waterman, Jr. And I'll call Mr. Waterman out because he worked in the assessors' office and was elected in 1977 as assessor and served in the county for 24 years and lived in Camarillo and he passed recently, just for the record, to submit that. And that's my public comment, my board comments. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and to see the whole community come out. It's been a while since we've been in Santa Paula. I really like the idea that the board does kind of go on the road and go to the different communities and I thank Supervisor Long for arranging this. Just thinking of a couple of things that we're doing that the community might be interested in, Supervisor Long and myself have helped put together a commission called the Women's Economic Roundtable and they are going to be having a conference for young girls. So it's to help young girls learn about careers that are available to them and it will be at Cal State University Channel Islands on Saturday, October 24th. And I know you can contact Supervisor Long's office and get more information on that. So I encourage people to attend if you have young women in the community that you think would be, could benefit from it, and I think almost anyone could. It's really to look at women who could be mentors to them and work with them. So I just wanted to give a plug for that. And that concludes my comments.
And it's free. It's free. So reach out to your high school, young women. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. Yes, we, this is kind of a special time for all of us when we get to go on the road. As Supervisor Park said, we get to hear these kind of comments that we don't always get to hear because a lot of you are working during the day when we're doing our thing. And so this is kind of a special time when the people that aren't, that have come here at night, give us your thoughts because some of these things that we're hearing about and some of the issues that went on at the emergency room, all those kind of things we don't always get to hear. So this is a special time for us and it's great to go out in the community. It's a great place that, we went to dinner tonight, had a wonderful time. It's just great for us to be able to see the community. You know, supervisors, we are county supervisors. We don't always, you know, get involved in city issues, but we are your county supervisors and we appreciate the opportunity that you'd come out tonight and to hear. You know, you can also hear these, you can go online and listen to these meetings on a regular basis because it's important to hear what goes on in the county. A lot of times you know what goes on in the city, but in the county. And there's a lot of things that go on in a lot of different parts and that we just want you to be involved. One thing about this great democracy we live in is citizen involvement and this is what we're trying to do here by being out here and be involved. And so I just want to say thank you. I appreciate you willing to come out, appreciate you willing to make the comments. We get to hear things we don't always get to hear. So thank you for letting us enjoy your great city. Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you.
Push button.
Good. Thank you for the warm welcome. Appreciate the mayor and I particularly appreciate the moment of inspiration from Councilmember Crosswhite reminding us, why did we go, why did we go into public service? And I think that is appropriate for me to use that to kick off. You know, part of why hopefully everybody goes into public service is things like Santa Paula Hospital, you know? To have that happen and have this community still be linked together with that hospital and have great staff members that made it happen. We had, you had a great supervisor that made that happen. I want to just digress for a second, but Supervisor Long has been representing Santa Paula for a long period of time and the residents of Santa Paula are really fortunate just from the inside of, so you have a remarkable supervisor that has been representing Santa Paula and Santa Clara Valley and stuff. So I just, the sense of community in Santa Paula is going to evolve over time. This is one of the historic communities in Ventura County and it will keep evolving and there will be disagreements, but as Supervisor Foy said, if you engage, you can make your community a great community. And there is usually, on both sides of the equation, great agreement that engagement is the best thing that can happen to a community. So great that we have so many of you here, whether you're engaged in making your community look beautiful, or you're engaged in trying to make your community safer, or you're engaged in trying to make your community more representative or just of low-income people that need better services. That's what makes Santa Paula great and I've really respected Santa Paula and Supervisor Long's work here for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Aragosa.
Yeah, thank you so much to the city of Santa Paula and thank you to the mayor, John, and also the mayor pro tem, Martine. It's really great to hear from the public and especially, you know, the people that are talking about safety. Safety is extremely important to me, that explosion that happened here in Santa Paula. I was in a CSAC meeting when I heard about it in Los Angeles and I was really, really concerned to see that explosion. One of the things that I was concerned about too for the residents of Santa Paula is that we have facilities in Ochsard, too, that are close to thousands of people. I mean thousands, literally. And so that kind of concern, I think, is really important. I really want to thank you for being here, for sharing with us your concerns and also as county representatives. One of the things that I want to mention too is that I had to the Board of Supervisors and also to the residents here is that Ventura County has a great outpatient therapy program. I went over to see over on Eastman Avenue for individuals that have county insurers and so forth, that outpatient therapy that by Dan Shapiro is just excellent, Michael, and I just wanted to share that with you, to our people that kind of work with VCMC and also with Santa Paula and all the other patients. One of the things that I also had the opportunity to attend was a Ventura County Criminal Justice Graduation for our sheriffs the other day. We had numerous sheriffs graduate, you know, from the academy and we have police officers from Ochsard, from Simi Valley, from Santa Barbara. We have joint use of our facilities. It was just great, you know? The public safety is extremely important to me. Again, I want to thank you for sharing and I love Santa Paula. I have relatives here in Santa Paula, I have relatives in Ventura, in Simi Valley, Moore Park. Been arisen, been born and raised here, you know, it's really, it's beautiful here. Thank you so much for the invitation, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Love. One of these things I'll share with why I ran for city council, or for city council and for supervisor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Excuse me. I'd like you also to adjourn in memory of those folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I'll get to them. Just, all right. That concludes the board comments and thinking about what Jenny said, you do think back after all these years, what inspired you and was it an incident or a passion for public policy? And as most of you know, having worked also in the prior supervisor's office, so being out in the community, immediately feeling that the community is what really makes the people, makes our community so rich and to be engaged with them and to be able to work through those tough issues and find success in them. You find that more at local government than you do at state or federal. Sometimes they get mired down in the, more the politics of it, but to really be able to talk to Audrey Vincent at various meetings and hear what the issues are and in the grocery stores and so you do. You keep that passion for people and it keeps you focused on what the real reason and the inspiration is. So thank you, Jenny, for that, reminding us of that. Okay, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Longwell. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community, it is a great privilege to be here. This is, Santa Paula is such a warm and tight-knit and proud community and we really enjoy working out here in Supervisor Long's direction. We've worked with several councilmembers and members of the community out here to enhance services, improve coordination and awareness and we'll continue to do that. And just a little small note, on Santa Paula Hospital, it's wonderful that it's there and this is your community hospital and I'm personally very proud of the fact that my son Charlie was born there six years ago, so real mark of pride for us. So we're delighted to be here, although I do want to call out to City Manager Jaime Fontes for raising the bar here with these fancy desserts, so.
I do hope that's going to happen in county.
Yeah, it's in trouble now. Thank you, Jaime. No, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Now let's move on to our agenda items, our next ones, and we will proceed with item 13 and that is presentation from our Parks Department on the Steckel Park Avery. And I wanted to see.
Wait again. Is gentleman reaching Mr.'s card?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, if I did, I'm so sorry. Please come in. If I did, I apologize. Please.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
My name's Rod Elliott, local businessperson here in town. And I do a few projects here in the Santa Paula Creek and Santa Clara River. And I've got a few photos here for you that, one of them's on that wall right there that shows the airport when it got washed out, 2005. And these are some current pictures of the river today and no one's ever addressed the problem there at the mouth of the Santa Paula Creek and Santa Clara River. So with the water diverted the way it got diverted in 2005, the water's going to go right back to the airport again if we have this El Nino that everyone's predicting. So no one's ever made any attempt to clean it, to stop it from going back to the airport. We almost lost the 12th Street Bridge at that time, too, so I don't think we really want to lose the bridge and the airport if this rain event comes, though. I'd like to give you these photos that shows, you can still see the plume today.
Okay, Mr. Elliott, thank you for that.
So up on, above the Harvey diversion up on Santa Paula Creek, if you.
Is this one each, one each or?
One of each, yeah. If you go up there above the Harvey diversion and you can't see it now, but you used to be able to see it. I've walked the creek and the center of the river is above the road because the boulders and the dirt is piled up to where it's been obstructed. Now it's got trees growing in it, so nothing's going to dislodge it without going in there and just removing it. So if we get this rain that everyone's predicting, then there's a good chance we'll lose Highway 150 as well. So I would suggest that the county may want to go inspect those areas.
Okay. If you would leave a contact information, certainly our Public Works Director is here and our Watershed Protection District Director and we'll get back to you as to what the status is. Certainly, we, in fact, we'll hear some tonight that we are expecting El Ninos and I know they've been out in the watershed areas doing as much cleaning as they can, so we'll take a look and see if we can get a status on it.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Okay, Supervisor. Stickle Park Avery. I think Stickle Park Avery had a visitor tonight.
That's what I heard.
Mr. Van Dyke is our Parks Director. He's going to give us an update on Stickle Park.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Mayor, who just, I guess, went that way. For the record, Ron Van Dyke, Deputy Director, General Services. You saw the slide presentation a couple of years ago when we redid the bird Avery at Stickle Park, but the citizens haven't, so I think it's an opportunity for them to, didn't really know what the condition of the Avery was, is what it was actually. Get this to work, we'll be getting started here. Whoops, went too far. Come on, come on, come on. Oh, dead slide.
I've got photos.
You got photos? The Supervisor took photos today. This is after, we had a shot of that before, but unfortunately, the slide went dead on us. Don't know what happened. This is walking, the walking path of broken-up asphalt in one of the corners. The creek is by, on the other side of that chain link, and this is the repair that was Here's the back of the Avery. And there's what it looks like today. This is our, the biggest end of the Avery. We have peacocks currently in one side of this section. They also run wild. As you can see, there's one on top of the roof of the same section. So, we have them inside and outside. This is the front of the Avery, which you see soon as you drove up, and now this is what the front looks like. This is the inside. This is where all the business work takes between the pins themselves, and this is the new look. We got this work done by the college welding shop, did these new gates for us at both ends. This is a new runoff area. We have a big problem, and it's just in time to test it and see if it works, because if we have El Nino, we have big problems with flooding in the Avery and the water sheeting off the parking lot and right through the Avery. So, between Public Works helping us out with setting the road, we reset the parking area to get more pitch to it, and this drainage to go directly to the river, we should keep the Avery from flooding out and losing all of our gravel. This is one of our long-term residents, and some of his buddies that have been in there for quite a while. Here's some of our waterfowl. This was an added feature that was put in, the waterfall. We already had the pond in there, but we didn't have anything to really circulate the water, and having that feature in there helps keep the water circulating properly and aerated. Just another angle of our noisy residents. They like making a lot of noise. That's the Avery. When, what we got ourselves into sort of back in the 80s, we used grant money to update the Avery, and then we, fortunately, it deteriorated over time like anything does. Your house deteriorates over time unless you maintenance, and trying to maintain chicken wire is very difficult to do. You have to basically strip it down, get down to the pipes that are underneath, make them bare, and repair. We just didn't have the funding for that. It was going to cost us about $150,000 was our estimate to do this repair. There was a theme I heard tonight about Santa Paula and the citizens of Santa Paula, being proud of their city and wanting to do more for their city, and they proved that. They came to Kathy Long and said, "We don't want the Avery to close. We need to do something about it." And they stepped up and actually did something about it. Part of the fallout was these four objectives we did through a long-term plan now that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, so we hope to not get into this situation again. We have a great partnership with our Animal Services Department in fostering the birds and keeping the birds healthy and finding us new residents when we start getting, our population gets a little low. But right now, we're at max population to our policy. We've got 150 birds in the Avery right now, with 17 different species. So, there's definitely something there to look at. The community came forward with about $80,000 of raised funds and in-kind donations to rehab the facility. That's really not the punchline. The punchline is it was over 440,000 or 44,000 or, I can't even say it tonight, 4,400 man-hours of volunteer labor that went into that Avery to put it back, tear it down and put it back together again.
Men and women.
Men and women, children. The whole gamut was there. What was really amazing is a couple of my staff live in Santa Paula, and they put in unbelievable number of man-hours on their own time to the Avery as basically volunteers and citizens of Santa Paula, which is pretty cool. We do have a donor plaque for this that we had made. Hasn't been put up yet, and we apologize for that, but we're waiting for a really nice bulletin board that we ordered. When it comes in, we'll have a nice donor plaque of all the people that contributed to the Avery for, you know, put it up in forever. It's a really nice plaque that we had made up by Azwell Trophy, as a matter of fact.
We'll have that up in the next year or so, I'm sure.
It'll be up probably in the next, hopefully, next six months. Soon as the board shows up, we'll have it up. It's on order. The board is on order, so it's coming. Don't know when it's showing up, but it's.
Probably next month.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping. Just as a data point, we have over 100 cars that works out to probably over 200 people a day that actually go into Stickle Park. That's what our gate counter tells us, the number of vehicles that travel through that gate on a daily basis. So, the Avery gets looked at, and people go visit. So, with that, I'll see if there's any questions from the board.
Well, I appreciate that past, present, and future look. Thank you, Rod. Other comments?
It was great. We had the opportunity at dinner tonight to hear about the park and people, you know, my age or whatever, were going back years ago as kids, and it was like the zoo and a special thing. And now, it's great that this community's come together to really make that something special and to keep it there, so.
We had a zoo in there for a while. Back in the 50s, there was a zoo there.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't have a lot of animals, but there was other animals in there besides birds.
I want to thank you because I think ownership is so important, because the people in Santa Paula have really taken ownership of that. I'm sorry. Okay? Can you hear me? The ownership, I think, is extremely important, and I just want to thank all the volunteers for all the men and women hours that they put together, you know, so thank you again for an excellent job.
Great.
I got a chance to go out and take a look at it for the first time today and just really enjoyed it. Didn't have the picture of the lovebirds, which are really sweet, got lots of them in there, and the pheasants, which are bright, bright yellow, which I wouldn't expect with really long tails. So, it's just a great place, I think, for children, for people of all ages, and a very serene environment to be in, except for the occasional squawking peacock or something. But I just, if anyone hasn't been there, boy, I think it'd be a great place for families and kids and people of all ages.
One of the things that we did, because of the exotics and the birds that are in there, we used to have, you know, the old propane burner-type heaters that were in the, in that workway, sitting in the workway. We, as you saw, there's, they're not in there now, but if you did notice, we've got big electric air blowers that are up in the upper section of the Avery now that we can flip a switch and get heat when the temperature gets in the 30s in the valley up there.
And Animal Services is taking care of the animals? Is that all?
We do the day-to-day upkeep. We have a host out there that feeds and cares for the birds on a daily basis. Animal Services is engaged if we need any medical services or at the transport, they take one to get looked at.
Well, they are very well-maintained. I mean, the place is immaculate, it's clean, and the animals look great, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Receive and file on that? Motion to receive and file?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Teresa, thank you, as always. Thank you. All right, our next item, 14. I have the pleasure of presenting a resolution to honor Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce for their 100th anniversary. I would invite up Fred Robinson, the CEO of the Santa Paula Chamber. Angela Brinkoff is here, the Office Manager, as I read some highlights on this recognition. And as Supervisor Bennett pointed out, this is a community that has a long history. Well, in fact, the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce, 100 years, their 100th anniversary this year. Founded in 1950, serves the business community for over 100 years. It's located in the Historic Depot on 10th and Santa Barbara Street, and the Chamber welcomes hundreds of visitors to Santa Paula. That's their core mission and to serve their business community. Provide information regarding the history of the city, make referrals to local businesses, restaurants, hotels, and information about the historical attractions in this city, which there are many. Santa Paula Chamber hosts monthly mixers and sunrise Santa Paula breakfast meetings, which truly are with the sun rising, very early, and offering business and networking opportunities. They honor their public safety officers once a month, fire department personnel, teachers, principals, beautification projects, and yard of the month. And they also hold the annual awards luncheon, where they honor Citizen of the Year, Large and Small Business of the Year, the Dr. Sam Edwards Lifetime Achievement Award, and other special honors. They partner with the city of Santa Paula to bring special events to the city, collaborate with the city to promote economic development and new business opportunities, and they partner with the Santa Paula Police Officers Association to co-host Cruise Night, which is very popular, on the first Friday of each month from April through October. And it highlights a beautiful downtown. It just has a tremendous turnout from the community. So, they have a very active, engaged Board of Directors, as you know, all chambers. That's really what makes it work. And Fred has been doing, serving in the leadership role now for a couple of years, and really has taken the Board of Directors to be even more engaged, high-energy, lots of continued successes they accomplish throughout the year. They have a core group of volunteers who work long hours, evenings, weekends, holidays, to ensure that the Chamber gets known in the community and garners new supporters. So, this is really to celebrate, commemorate the anniversary of the Chamber in recognition of 100 years of service to Santa Paula, and certainly wishing you great success in the future. Mr. Robinson.
Well, thank you. Thank you for inviting us this evening. I know when Martine Hernandez contacted me and said you were thinking about doing this, it created a real conundrum for me. I'm sort of semi-retired, although I spend a lot of time at the Chamber, but I had three choices. It was either the presidential debate, the Mets-Dodger game, or being able to spend an evening with you, and you got my full attention. So, thank you for coming to Santa Paula. I want to introduce some of our board members who are in the audience. Our Chair, Zahid Shah, was here earlier and had to leave. So, we have Jose Luis Melgar.
All right.
Al.
There's Al. Hey, Al. All right.
You have to do this whenever you have a board. Did I miss anybody? Oh, great. Well, anyway, I won't take up much of your time. I know you're running a little late and have a lot of business, but again, thank you for being in Santa Paula. And we'll give you a little history about the Chamber and our impact in Santa Paula. 100 years ago, there were two great things that happened in this country. One was that Kiwanis International was established in Detroit, Michigan. That was one. And the second was that a group of businessmen and merchants here in Santa Paula got together and formed the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce. And these were some prominent local businessmen, farmers, entrepreneurs, with names that still are in the lore of Santa Paula, the Blanchard family, Teague, McKevitt, the Thiel family, Orchid, Henderson, and I'm sure I missed some, but these are people that really founded Santa Paula. In the first half of the 19th century, Santa Paula was really the hub of economic activity in Ventura County. Oil was discovered here. The Union Oil Company was founded here in 1890. And of course, we've always had agriculture. Another industry that people don't know a lot about is Santa Paula was the first center for the film industry, and a lot of movies were actually filmed in and around Santa Paula in the early part of the 20th century. We gave up that to Hollywood, and we're probably better off for doing that. In 1928, Santa Paula suffered a severe blow with the collapse of the St. Francis Dam. This entire valley was pretty much wiped out, including much of lower Santa Paula. And these were tough times, and that was followed by the Great Depression. And there was one man, and the Chamber suffered like all businesses and organizations at that time, and there was one local leader who kind of held the business community together and said, "We've got to keep this going," and that was Jim Proctor. And I think he would be very proud of his grandson here tonight. Where did John go?
There he is.
There he is. So, thank you for that. But today, we work to promote business here in Santa Paula and tourism. We're in the depot, and we do have a lot of people that come in there that just want to look around and see the city and the valley. So, we want to thank you for your support, and thank you for this honor tonight. And you have something for us?
I do. And I'd like the board of directors to sit here. Please come up. Take the picture. The resolution.
Please stay up here a minute. I have a speaker card from Senator Hannah Beth Jackson's office, Carla Castilla. She has a certificate she'd like to present to the Chamber also.
It's an honor to be here, thank you Chair Long, and to the board, staff, and community to celebrate and honor your 100-year history here, and we are just grateful for the partnership, for the opportunity to work with you in bringing business information to the community from the state level, and we thank you. Congratulations on your 100 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming. And, well, again, thank you for inviting us this evening, and I want to extend a big thank you to Supervisor Long, who has been very supportive of the Chamber over the years. She always comes to our events, our awards luncheon, any special events, and best of luck in retirement. And again, thank you for all your support, and thank you, folks.
Yeah, yeah, isn't that, there is.
Thank you for that history lesson. That was great.
Okay, next up, we're going to have a presentation from Healthcare Services, those particular to this, for our Santa Clara Valley, Santa Paula, and Barry Fisher from our healthcare agency, the Director of the Agency. Good evening.
Good evening. Great to be in Santa Paula. Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Fisher with the County Healthcare Agency. I'm going to give an overview of our agency and more specifically, services provided to the city of Santa Paula. And just for, I know we had Ms. Hicks speak earlier about her issue with Blue Cross. That will be fixed to her satisfaction tomorrow morning. Kim Milstein, our hospital CEO, spoke with her, and Catherine Rodriguez, our interim CFO, fired off a quick email to our billing department, and it turned out to be a glitch, so that will be taken care of tomorrow.
Thank you. Would you pull the mic up a little bit there, Barry? Thank you.
Supervisor Long was just testing you to see how you did. You did good.
Thank you. Healthcare Agency. As most know, we're the largest agency within the county family, close to 3,000 employees, over $700 million operating budget. It's made up of behavioral health, ambulatory care, which is our clinic system, public health, Ventura County Medical Center, Santa Paula Hospital. We also have our own county healthcare plan, which serves most of our county employees, and we have the medical examiner's office. The agency itself, excuse me, is made up of two hospitals. We do have a family medicine residency program that was nationally recognized as being number one in the nation, which is a great distinction. As you can see, our ambulatory medical clinics are, we have plenty, they're all over the county, including six urgent care centers, 10 behavioral health clinics, two public health clinics, and we also have a mobile medical. health clinics, and we also have a mobile medical unit, a mammography unit, and a health and education access unit that goes out and about throughout the county. Santa Paula Hospital history. Mayor Proctor brought that up. Supervisor Long was very involved, as well as other board members, and Mr. Powers, who was the agency director at the time, was instrumental in resurrecting this, I call it the gem of the valley. It's just a beautiful hospital, and very, very happy that it was reopened. Close in 2003, the county purchased it and reopened it July of 2006. Babies. This is a great place to have babies. If you've walked through our maternity department and you see the views out of the hospital rooms, it is just outstanding. Mr. Powers had his son Charlie there, supporting our system, and we've, and since opening, have delivered over 3,000 babies at the hospital. Santa Paula Hospital was designated as baby-friendly, which is a designation shared with only 292 other hospitals within the nation. Our OB tours are given monthly in Spanish and in English, and again, if you get a chance to take a tour through the hospital, it is really just a beautiful, well-maintained hospital. Bee Freas, our nurse manager, just does a fantastic job. Would she appear? Say hi. It's a 49-bed hospital, fully integrated with our outpatient clinic system. We have a fully-integrated health system, similar to what Kaiser has, but I think our system's better. Twelve of those beds are OB. Every room has, again, just a gorgeous view. January 25, 2015, the breastfeeding cafe bilingual support group launched a weekly meeting at Santa Paula West Medical Group. We have prenatal breastfeeding classes that meet the first three weeks of every month. Physician services. This is specifically Santa Paula Hospital, and what we did over the last year and a half, two years, with the help of the CEO's office, is we, instead of having two separate hospitalist groups, we use one hospitalist group. So, the hospitalist group that ran VCMC, we had them take over Santa Paula Hospital. Same thing with anesthesiology and surgical services. And as you can see, with that integration, there's a lot more conversations that take place on the care of our patients and scheduling of surgeries. So, you can see, we've had a 19% increase in surgeries just at Santa Paula Hospital. Physician services. This is another service that we combined. The VCMC Seaside Emergency Group that handled the emergency room at Ventura County Medical Center, we had them take over Santa Paula Hospital Emergency Department, and you can see the increase, 2013, 1314, and going up to 8.5% in 1415. What the emergency group did is really streamlined the processes. We found at both hospitals that we had long wait times, people left before they were being seen. That number has dropped dramatically due to the efforts of Seaside Emergency Group, and we're keeping most patients from leaving the emergency department because they're seen timely, which is just fantastic for our system. Santa Paula Hospital statistics, ER visits, deliveries. We get down to the net income. If you look at where we started in '07 and where we're ending up in fiscal year '15, I'd say that's pretty good, from going from nothing and having that foresight to build and expand. It's just, it's been a huge team effort from a lot of people over a lot of years to make this hospital financially stable.
Hey Barry, if I could say before you change that, I came on in 2007, and Mr. Powers made me a promise that by the 2011, he'd be profitable, and he did. And it just shows the community believed in what you believed in here, and it's worked very well.
Fiscal year '15, you know, with the drop from $2 million in net income down to $300, how much of that is the Cerner system?
Cerner system is, I don't know an exact percentage of that, but keep in mind that we're also doing a hospital seismic retrofit to that hospital, so we have a lot of money coming out of general operating expenses to bring that facility up to seismic standards.
Appreciate expenses, rigor, cash coming in.
Thank you.
Services in Santa Paula. We have a new program, which has become very successful with patients with COPD. It's a referral program offered to improve health outcomes, and we actually do home visitations to check up on the patients, make sure they're taking their medications, answer any questions they have, and we're an access point for their primary care physician. Cover California and Medi-Cal education, not only do that in Santa Paula, but we do that countywide. Grief Support Group, provided in collaboration with assisted home hospice at Santa Paula, meets on a weekly basis. The Santa Paula Citizen Corps meets there. Tobacco Sensation Program, Senior Fall Prevention Program, all done up at Santa Paula Hospital. So, Santa Paula Hospital, so I mentioned seismic retrofitting. We should have that done in approximately a year, year and a half, and that will give us essentially permission to operate into 2030, which is a little bit of breathing room, but we're going to have to start looking forward at, 2030's going to come up on us fairly quick. So, I know we want to build one hospital at a time, but we'll have to have that discussion at some point. We are expanding our pharmacy at the hospital. Surgery expansion, we're going to open up the third operating room. So, you saw the statistics on how many surgeries we're doing at Santa Paula. That third operating room is really going to bump that up. Our surgery department and anesthesiology are just clicking, and they're really moving along, so that third OR is going to be huge. Award that Santa Paula received in 2013, 14, Prevention of Hospital-Aquired Ulcers. So, that was a nice distinction. Cerner electronic medical records, our entire system, including Santa Paula Hospital, is on that, which makes for better patient care. So, if a patient goes from Santa Paula to VCMC or vice versa, we've got all that information on the patient to take care of them. The nurse call system was upgraded. We replaced the boilers at the facility, which was both energy and water savings. That equipment was very, very old, so over time, that will actually pay for itself. And we improved the security monitoring of the facility itself. Ambulatory care. We're a one-stop shop. We're a fully-integrated system. We encourage all patients to have a primary care home. As you know, we have several areas where we have services under one roof. We have the ambulatory care clinics, we have behavioral health, we have public health, we have the WIC program. We're looking at doing that with Santa Paula with the expansion of East Area One here in Santa Paula with the Limoneira Company. So, Santa Paula is going to get the same services under one roof, instead of having to move from place to place to get all the services, so we're real excited about that. And just some of the different things that our primary care physicians treat at their Here's where the clinics are located here in Santa Paula. We recently added a brand-new clinic, Citrus Grove Medical Clinic, Dr. Ippolito. Very excited about that. Requests for our services continue to increase, and again, as has been mentioned before, it's a community effort. It's rallying around your health system, and Santa Paula's just been fantastic doing that. Some of the other services that are there, diabetes case management, patient care integration. Again, we're really focusing on the integration of primary care and behavioral health services here in Santa Paula. Santa Paula Medical Clinic, Tattoo Removal Clinic, Martine Hernandez has been very, very involved with that, and that's been a very successful program. Mental Health Clinics and Inpatient Services. We've got two, one on Main Street, one on Ventura Street. We're very active in this area with behavioral health services. We're meeting with the Latino Town Hall members on improving access for behavioral health, and we're making, we're making very good progress, slow but steady. Alcohol and Drug Centers here in Santa Paula for DOI program, and also the outpatient treatment. More behavioral health services here in Santa Paula. It's quite a bit. Once you start, I'll pull out a couple of them. We've got the promatoris. You'll have another item on your agenda with Guadalupe Church. Father Charles had lunch with him a few months ago and with staff to increase the promatoris. They've just done a fantastic job with us. Interface is located with us, respite services, positive parenting programs, and you could see the number of behavioral health programs that we do provide in this area. Public health, again, located in each of our cities in the county, field nursing, health access and promotion. Their key part is prevention. As you know, the Board adopted Health in All policies, which is a great step in the right direction, and public health there, out there every single weekend, promoting healthy families and healthy communities. They just do a fantastic job, and they have a WIC clinic here on Harvard Boulevard. We're very active in our community. You can see all the different events that we do here in Santa Paula. We just, actually just attended the Latino Town Hall Awards, a very successful and well-attended event, and again, we are very active in this particular community. There's just some pictures of our outreach, some of our mobile units that we use, and just all our outreach teams just do a fantastic job. And it all comes down to quality of care. Our whole system is focused on this. All our physicians are board-certified, joint-commissioned accredited for our hospitals. Performance improvement is a culture within our system, and as you know, within the county system with Lean Six Sigma, that's prevalent throughout the healthcare agency as well as the county. We do offer interpretation services throughout the hospital and clinic system for a multitude of languages, and again, the integration of behavioral health and primary care services is a big focus for us now and into the future. With that, any questions?
Question?
Just to comment, one of the things, I mean, we had heard a comment today by one of the speakers talked about what's the county doing in the community and for this, and also look at this, the county spent a lot of money to put this in place, you've got a lot of offices with doctors and everything else. The employment opportunities within this community for what you've done, and the people here, and they're going to lunch in restaurants, and this has been a big thing. I mean, besides a community place, people aren't having to go to Ventura or someplace else to get their care, this has really worked out well for the citizens of this county, but also they've embraced it, but it's been a big employment piece. I don't know how many people work at the hospital and all this, but I'm...
Over 100.
Over 100. So, it's a big employer, done a lot of things, a lot of money spent in this community, which I think is really, really important, what the county has done, because a lot of people said, "Oh, that hospital's never going to open." Supervisor Long said, "No, we're going to make sure it opens," and Mr. Powers, they worked together to make that happen, and it's been a success. Like you said, there's been a lot invested in this community. It's been great to see that. Thank you for making that presentation.
I agree. It was remarkable, because at a time when we were seeing hospitals closing across the nation, here we had, it happened in Santa Paula, and we opened one, and it was a feat, and I'm just so delighted that we were able to do that, and obviously Supervisor Long led the way on that, but it was remarkable, if you think about the time when it occurred. People, you know, were closing hospitals, they weren't opening them, and it was such an important feature for the community.
Yeah, you're right. Before I came on, people said, "You're going to hear about this whole thing, they want to do this hospital, nobody can be successful out there in Santa Paula, the community won't embrace it." Well, proved them completely wrong.
Sorry. There are other copies of this, if anyone would like one, Peggy Kelly. Mr. Fisher, would you introduce, I know our public health director is here, and our behavioral health director, have them stand up, please, and...
Yes, let me introduce Kim Milstein, our hospital chief executive officer. Rigo Vargas, our public health director. Elaine Crandall, our behavioral health director. Bee Freas, our nurse manager at Santa Paula Hospital. Dr. Renee Higgins, one of our chiefs of ambulatory care clinic. Our chief financial officer, Catherine Rodriguez. Terry Yanis from the CEO's office, our CEO analyst, a very key. Narcie Egan from Fiscal. And Ursula Sutherland from Fiscal. That's our team.
Thank you. I appreciate that thorough update, and it is exciting to see everything, how it's evolved, how both past, present, and the future ahead for all the good work out here in the Santa Clara Valley for the healthcare agency. Appreciate all the leadership and the teams and everybody. Thank you. We have a receive and file on that, board members? Motion to receive, and a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going to do item 18, because I guess we have some folks here. So, item 18, right? Behavioral health, and Elaine Crandall. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Long, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Mr. Mayor, I think you stepped out.
He's over that way.
He's this way. Councilwoman Crosswhite, and Councilman Hernandez. My name is Elaine Crandall. I'm the Director for the Behavioral Health Department. Very pleased today to come to you this evening for an approval and authorization for our purchasing agent to sign a First Amendment with our Lady of Guadalupe Parish to expand their program to include greater outreach and engagement services, and increasing their contract from $51,500 to $101,500, or an increase of $50,000. The second recommendation is the approval and authorization for the purchasing agent or their designee to extend the term of our Lady of Guadalupe Parish agreement up to two times, each for a period of no more than one year, on the same or more favorable term conditions, with any changes in the scope of work to be consistent with the original purpose of the contract, at an amount that does not exceed the pro-rata amount of either the contract amount as amended hereby, or any board-approved increases made to the contract within this fiscal year. I think we've all been thinking about Ms. Crosswhite's comments, and one of the things that struck me when I heard it was thinking about my... that struck me when I heard it was thinking about my childhood, and what are the influences that I had, and, you know, as many of you knew, I grew up in Okinawa, and it was Father Valentine for me, and along with Brother Martin. And I just think about the importance of the local churches in a community, and so I'm very pleased today to talk about Our Lady of Guadalupe and the things they've done in their local community, because they invest in the future of so many families here in terms of wellness and mental health. And these are a group of people who really make a difference every single day. Our Lady of Guadalupe provides mental health services through both our MHSA program and with this expansion, with your approval, through the mental health program to do prevention and outreach. What we're doing today is expanding the outreach portion. On the prevention side, some of their activities include having a mental health outreach committee, offering assistance to the community with the mental health referral process, offering parent support groups, providing monthly youth activities on wellness, making referrals to something that's called Triple P, which is a parenting class, attending community outreach events, and just in terms of scope, just in this last fiscal year, Our Lady of Guadalupe Parish provided 162 activities and reached 4,312 participants.
Nice.
One of the things that we seek to do as a Behavioral Health Department is to reach underserved populations, and we know that the Latino population often, not often, is underserved in mental health services. And so we reached out to Our Lady of Guadalupe with the reach that they have, to reach out into the community, and, you know, we've heard about warm hand-off, and I call this the warm hand-in, to reach people, work them through our process, stay in contact with them, help them feel safe as they maneuver through and receive services from us. So, ready to answer any questions?
I do have public speaking requests, but are there any questions at this time of Ms. Crandall?
I'll answer.
Okay. We'll be back to you then, so let's open up for public comment and invite up first Father Charles.
I'm gonna ask you, Mrs. Hernandez.
Okay, all right.
Amy's first.
Okay, well, then, Mrs., let's have Mrs. Hernandez.
And Mary Carmen.
Yes. Yes.
He can control the order.
Tell me, I'm easy.
Buenas tardes y buenas, gracias por tener...
Good evening, and thank you for having us here.
My name is Selvi Hernandez, and I live in Santa Paula. I am here as the coordinator of the project, La Esperanza.
We would like to give you a brief synopsis of the new benefit that we will have, if we are awarded the money for this program.
Family.
Family. We will cover those basic needs that keep the patient from being able to go to therapy, and follow the treatment that is indicated. We would orient them, motivate them, keep them company, and we would personally be part of the referral process, and the admitting of that person, or family member required, or anyone that would need mental health services. We would follow up in every one of the referred cases to avoid that this person or family leave their treatment or have a relapse. We will have the adequate training in order to be able to help the individuals or their families that have the need to be referred for mental health services. We will help the consumers that are already getting their treatment, and those that have abandoned their therapy because of things that are out of their control. We will become familiar with the systems, so we can give them better guidance to mental health agencies or those agencies that refer them to us. This will open up all the opportunities to get to have a deeper knowledge of the situation of each patient that is prevented from keeping up with their treatment, because they don't have the moral support, or the social or economic support. We will be informing through magazines, radio, flyers, et cetera, about the importance of mental health for everyone. We will be helping the community to identify the risk factors that would take place to that person that is not receiving immediate help. We will make public presentations to the community, where the providing agencies will be present for mental health, so we could promote the trust and have them seek the services. I only wanted to add a little bit to this. During the last four years that I and Mary Carmen, who is an assistant to this project, we have a story to tell you that is similar to what the Director Elaine said.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Carmen Del Moran. I have lived in the city of Santa Paula for six years, and I am proud to belong to the Esperanza Project, under the Guadalupe Church auspices. It is important to let you know that this program, it is open to everyone. It doesn't matter what religious affiliation you may have. We cover the needs of anyone. Some of the results that we have accomplished during these six years are to be able to help more than 250 families. We have officially referred them to the mental health services. We have also increased the number of individuals and families that have been identified as those who need prevention services in mental health. We have increased the number of families that at this time are already receiving prevention and early intervention services. About 120 children and young people, at this time, are participating in the preventive Unfortunately, these activities have been labeled as recreational activities. They are not so. These activities have accomplished the increased self-esteem of these children, remove them from street activities, make them more self-sufficient, give them better discipline, so the parents have benefited from this, when they haven't been able to control the behavioral problems at the schools. There are many other benefits that we have seen during these last six years, and we have to have overcome so many barriers, especially because of the lack of information of families and individuals, about where to find the mental health services, the fear of appearing in a clinic, transportation problems, medical insurance problems, poverty situations, linguistic problems, migrant status, and especially the great lack of trust because of the cultural stigma against these services that our community has. So this new grant will bring so many benefits to this community, and we are here to help everyone that needs this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very well done.
Good evening, Supervisors and Residents. It's an honor to be here, to share thoughts of support, care, and love. I've been in Santa Paula for 15 years, born and raised in Los Angeles. I love Santa Paula, I don't go back to Alexandria unless I have to. Great place to be, but not because of the beauty of the ocean so close by, and the hills and the trees, it's the people, it's the residents, it's the care and compassion of the people. What my fellow minister, Pastor Jenny, shared, she's right on, on the same page, the children, the needs, and we reach out. The other services and activities for the kids, various types of recreation, activities for health, and also sports, and I permitted the Project Esperanza to use our church, the facilities, they have 100% support. Any person in this room would come to my church, spend one week in my office, and see the work that these women do. I mean, I'm almost convinced that women are more organized than men. They are so organized, their work, their work ethic, their care, their concern. We have so many children with their needs, we have parading classes, we have, in fact, we have two deacons, one sitting right behind me here, Deacon Al Galain, very much involved, he's my politician as well, one foot in the door, the other is a PhD psychologist who worked with kids as well, Deacon Jason Miller. I wish to express my gratitude for listening to what they are doing, my care, concern, support, that they may continue on. I see the needs expressed by Reverend Jenny, and I see the wonderful future for our kids. In our parish, we have students in the third, fourth generation who are now attending Georgetown, Duke University, Harvard, work PhDs, a beautiful place to live, and I wish to thank each of you for listening and showing your love, support, and care. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. Is Laura Espinoza? Is that there you are, Laura?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just before we hear these next comments, I just want to stop and say, I don't think I've heard a better presentation from some people trying to bring their program alive. In all my years as a supervisor, the passion and...
Very thorough.
...that came through was remarkable, and the work of the translator was just flawless in terms of doing it.
She's very good.
Good evening. I'm Laura Espinoza, 233 Corte Linda, Santa Paula, and as a resident here in Santa Paula, I'm pleased to offer brief comments in support of the proposed action you're going, hopefully, to take this evening to support Proyecto Esperanza. You heard of the great work that Elvia Hernandez and Mary Carmen have done in our community. I want to acknowledge the work of Santa Paula Latino Town Hall, President Lorenzo Murasa unfortunately had a death in the family and could not be here in person, and Dr. Gavino Aguirre also unfortunately was out of town this evening. But they send their congratulations and regards to all of you for the support and the great work that this program has done in our community. As a member of this beautiful, diverse community, I thank you for your support, and I also wish to remind you that there are community folks here that are watching, are watching for the policymakers to make the right decisions on the proper and fair allocation of resources in our entire county, including the smaller community valley cities of Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Piru. So we appreciate the strong acknowledgement by increasing the funding this year, but certainly it's not enough for the needs that we all continue to see rising in this community. I'm especially concerned of our young immigrant community, our elementary and high school-age students, and their families who have to tackle these extreme obstacles that I think are beyond all of our normal, everyday lives that we all experience. And the least of that is, certainly is, the health, their mental health, their anxieties, the problems that they experience in school, need the good services that this county can offer them. So I would especially support the additional funding for this program, so that these young children can succeed in school, in their school life and in their work life for their families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you.
And I forgot one other thing. I, along with members of Santa Paula Latino Town Hall, are grateful to the Director who has extended herself to our community, has heard our concerns, and has done some tremendous work with Santa Paula Latino Town Hall. So I really thank Elaine Crandall in particular for that work.
Thank you for offering that. Thank you. Do you want to say something?
No, I just want to share with you.
Okay, Janice Gardner, our last speaker.
Good evening. Good evening, Supervisors and CEO Mike Powers. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Our Lady of Guadalupe contract. We had the privilege of, our Board had the privilege of coming out to Santa Paula in April and bringing our entire Board, and we were hosted by Father Charles and Elvia and, yes, and Mary Carmen, I'm kidding her, I'm gonna get the accent right, which was a wonderful evening for all of us and for the Board, and I just wanted to say that we were made aware of, at that time and even before, about the underserved needs of the Latino community, or the needs of the underserved population of the Latino community, and to that end, we, the Board, created a Latino Equity Work Group, and this work group is very, very active. We have many members of the Latino community from Santa Paula and Oxnard on our work group. We have just had the district school superintendents of both Santa Paula and Oxnard join our work group, and so when we were talking about the children, and it really is all about the children, they will better help us understand the needs of the children in both of these areas, and what we can do as a Board to better serve this population. We're very happy to be in Santa Paula this evening. We're very happy to be in Santa Paula this evening and to support Our Lady of Guadalupe's outreach efforts. We know that they will bring a warm, friendly, safe, and wonderful, wonderful helping hand to the community that they serve. So we're very, very happy for you guys. So I hope that you will agree to make a motion to approve this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Crandall, anything else to add on this?
I couldn't be more pleased to wait for your decision.
Okay. Supervisors, Eric, go say your.
Madam Chair, I want to thank, you know, Lourdes, you know, for the good job that she did, you know, translating, as Supervisor Bennett mentioned, and doing the excellent job that she does, you know, interpreting what the young ladies talked about. And thank you Father, you know, for your support to Lady Guadalupe. Thank you so much for your testimony. And also Elaine and Janice, you know, Janice Turner was, she's our advisory board chair for mental health, you know, and doing an excellent job. I want to thank you and all the people that are here too. Also Laura, the Latino Town Hall meeting, individuals, excuse me, for the good work you've done for Santa Paula. And I just want to thank Elaine because I had the opportunity just recently, just in fact, yesterday had the opportunity to use your services. You know, we had a tragedy in my family and we had your people go over to meet with my family. And I can tell you they were excellent, excellent, you know, people helping my kids, my grandkids and so forth. But I just want to thank you. It works, believe it or not. Not because I'm a supervisor, because they have the compassion and they went out to help. And I just want to thank you so much. I'm going to support this. I think it's important that we do so, you know, and I think that we have the community here behind us. So I want to thank you so much and I'm going to support this.
Sounds like a motion.
It's a motion.
Okay. Now we have a motion, there's a second.
I'll go ahead and second. And I just want to say you have a good program that's working and that's how you know you want to expand it. And fortunately, we have the folks out here have been doing a great job. And when you got something that works, you want to support it. So definitely want to second the motion.
And I agree. I mean, to see that much, the community coming together to make this happen with their own people, right here in their own town, they want to make all this happen. The community coming together, how can you say no to this kind of thing?
And for the seniors, muchas gracias por su testimonio. Gracias. That's, thank you in Greek.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you. Very, very good work. Thank you so much for your great heart and your opening doors and willingness to take on, continue to do the work. Please.
We speak not 100% English, but we try to explain exactly.
Did great. Did a great job. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. That concludes that item then. Again, thank you all. Exciting to be able to move that forward. And as our healthcare agency director noted, under the behavioral health portion of his presentation, there's an extensive amount of focus and effort and work being done. The work is never done. It always works to improve and have continuous improvement with the services, and that's our commitment. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Thank you, Ms. Crandall, and all the folks who are here. Thank you for that. We'll go back up now to item 16. And we want to hear from the watershed protection district and activities with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Santa Paula Creek. And where's Mr. Elliot? We'll get back to him.
Good evening Chair Long, Board Supervisor and CEO Powers. And to the city of Santa Paula. For the record, my name is Peter Shadey. I'm the deputy director within Watershed Protection District. Tonight, I will be updating your board on the Santa Paula Creek project. And just as a side note, thank you for inviting us to present tonight. I have to admit that on occasion I've Googled El Niño in the last couple of weeks, and there are articles every day popping up about this coming winter. So it's very appropriate, I think, to have a discussion. I know your board is aware of some of the preparations that we're doing as an agency in other parts of the county, but to bring it home to Santa Paula during this meeting is very important. Because this project has such a long and storied history, I will start by giving you some background on the project, current status, and what we anticipate for the near future. So here's the Santa Paula Creek watershed. It's 45 square miles. Most of that is upstream of the city of Santa Paula and the project reach. So here you see the project reach. It's about 1.8 miles and it's all contained within the city of Santa Paula. So here's some history going back a long time ago. In 1948, the project began with congressional authorization. The first phase of the project was constructed in 1973 and ran from the confluence of the Santa Clara River all the way up to between the Highway 126 and Telegraph Road. In 1975, a court injunction stopped the construction of phases two and three, which included debris basins on the Santa Paula Creek and Mud Creek. As you all remember, back in the early 70s, it was the beginning of the environmental movement, and this was a casualty of the beginning of that. Between 1975 and 1990, without the planned debris basins, Phase One, which consisted of a reinforced concrete channel walls, an invert was damaged and repaired several times by the Corps of Engineer. So much of the invert had been eroded that the walls which were supported by the invert began to deflect into the channel. Then in 1996, the Corps completed a reevaluation report and certified the EIREIS for the currently constructed project, which was constructed between 1997 and 2001. A few years after the construction of the project, it became clear that there were problems. There was scour near the upstream limits of the project around the fish ladder that occurred that required the Corps to make minor modifications so that fish could access the ladder and get upstream. In 2004, the district requested that the Corps investigate this issue in more detail and implement a solution if needed. Then in 2005, Santa Paula Creek experienced a flood with a peak discharge of 27,500 cubic feet per second. To put this in context, the project design discharge is 28,000 CFs. So the project already, just a few years old, had already experienced close to the design capacity. This event caused a significant damage to the fish ladder and deposited 340,000 cubic yards of sediment. Following 2005, due to the lack of federal funding, the Corps was not able to remove the sediment. So the Corps and the district implemented an emergency action plan due to reduced flood capacity of the project. So just as, for a little fun, in case some of you haven't seen what the fish ladder looked like before, when it was built. And here's what it looked like right after the 2005 flood. So in 2009, the Corps received two sources of federal funding for the project. $4 million of continuing resolution funding was appropriated for the removal of the 340,000 cubic yards of sediment and included environmental clearances as well as project management. Also, the Corps received 7.5 million of ERA funding, and that was meant to complete repairs and modifications of the fish ladder, address the scour protection, and any remaining issues on the project. So in October of 2009, the Corps entered into a contract and began removing the 340,000 yards of sediment with the constraint of being out of the creek by November 15th. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make that, but thankfully, we didn't get any early rains and National Marine Fisheries Service, who regulates inadmissible fish, was willing to allow the Corps to finish the project. And then they finished the removal of the sediment in January 2010. So with that ERA funding, the Corps consulted and completed all terminales of the fish ladder modifications. This analysis included a number of stakeholder meetings attended by regulatory agencies and non-governmental organizations. There were alternatives that would have replaced the existing fish ladder with a new design. However, National Marine Fisheries Service indicated that a physical model would need to be completed in order for them to give approval for any of the fish ladder modifications. The Corps in turn indicated that additional time that would be required for that physical model would not work within the constraints required by ERA funding. In the end, the Corps decided that the existing fish ladder that had been previously approved by NIMPs was basically functional, and their preference was to repair and strengthen the fish ladder within its original design concept. The Corps requested NIMPs to consult on the fish ladder repair. However, NIMPs responded that the consultation would have to be for the entire project. Finally, due to frustration with progress on change of the fish ladder, local NGOs such as Cal Trout and Friends of Santa Clara River sent a letter to Senator Feinstein requesting help to address concerns with the project. Also, as part of the ERA funding, the Corps completed a hydraulic and sediment transport study of the Santa Paula Creek to arrest the scour issue. The analysis confirmed that there was capacity issues in the lower reaches of the project. The lower reaches are where the sediment will deposit first, which is the root of where that problem comes from. It was also confirmed, based on the original design invert, there would be scour in the upstream reach near the fish ladder of the project in years with low rainfall, which is what occurred between 2001 and 2004. They did complete an analysis of all terms to address this scour. Some included physical improvements like extending the fish ladder for the downstream and provide additional tow down of the bank, and others that did not, like just revising the design invert and leaving more sediment in the upstream reach that would enable the creek to withstand some minor erosion in those low water years. So here's the planned ERA work, the design work that was planned by the Corps of Engineers, designed for the scour protection, downstream overtopping, which was a concern downstream of Highway 126, completion of the fish ladder modifications or strengthening, and then environmental documentation and consultations. Additionally, there were some minor items that the Corps knew that they needed to complete, armoring the railroad pier, as well doing some work on the access road. And then finally, they were required to mitigate the removal of sediment and needed to plant some willows, so that work was also completed. So subsequent to the completion of the hydraulic sediment analysis, the Corps chose not to make any physical changes to the project. Instead, what they adopted was a change to the design invert of the channel. The determination there would be capacity issues downstream became a concern, and at one point, the Corps was considering building a flood wall on the east side of the channel to protect the development downstream of 126. However, there was concern with pushing flooding to the west, and in the end, the Corps decided that, or determined, that implementing this larger feature was not within the authorized project and therefore could not be completed with ERA funding. The Corps also completed the plans to repair and strengthen the fish ladder. The Corps prepared environmental documentation and requested consultation with NIMPs. Again, NIMPs responded that they were not able to consult for just the fish ladder repairs, but only consult on the entire project, including the ONM plan, which was a requirement of their original BO. After this response, the Corps determined that they would not be able to construct any repairs of the fish ladder with ERA funding and return the remaining amount of ERA funding back to headquarters. So during the Santa Clara River watershed study, the Santa Paula Creek hydrology was updated. That was in 2007. The Q100, or 1% chance flood increased from 28,000 cubic feet per second to 39,400 cubic feet per second. This concern was discussed during the updated hydraulic analysis, and the Corps analyzed the Q100 inundation limits with the approved project. It showed that additional flooding would occur between the railroad and downstream to the confluence of the Santa Clara River. Once the project is complete, the FEMA flood plan, which currently shows this area to be protected by a federal project, will need to be revised in consideration of this updated hydrology and the currently constructed project. The district has suggested to the Corps that Santa Paula Creek should be modified to be able to handle this additional Q100 discharge. The Q indicated that they will need to get new authorization and a reevaluation report to modify the project. And the first step to move forward with these items is for the project to be turned over to the district and the current project closed. So moving forward in 2012, the Corps submitted a biological assessment with the completed ONM manual, and they requested approval as required by that NIMPs' original BO. In August 2013, NIMPs responded with a jeopardy opinion for the entire project. The Corps, district, and NIMPs have had numerous meetings over the last two years to find common ground on the project. The sticking point with the Corps appears to be that they do not believe they have adequate authorization to complete the studies recommended by NIMPs and make modifications of the projects that would come out of these studies. The Corps is currently working on revisions to the ONM manual and biological assessment with the goal of defining more precisely the impact to the steelhead's ability to migrate through the project and request reconsultation with NIMPs. As far as project turnover, in May of 2014, the Corps sent a letter to the district indicating that the project is complete. They included an interim ONM manual constraining all ONM activities to above the waters of the US or NIMPs jurisdiction. So just to make that clear, anything within the creek is not, cannot be operated or maintained currently. Only those things above the jurisdiction of NOAA or National Marine Fisheries can be maintained. So if the project were to be accepted by the district, the only things that we could maintain are the access roads. In July of this year, with input from district, the district representative Julia Brownlee sent a letter to the President's Council on Environmental Quality requesting help to resolve the issues between the Corps and NIMPs, as well as reiterating the concerns with project deficiencies. Lastly, late last month, the district sent a letter to the Corps reiterating its position on project responsibility. Did I do that? So winter readiness, El Niño. So for this winter, we continue to be concerned about operation and maintenance of the project. The good news is that we've had minimal sediment deposition that's occurred since the 2009 cleanup. Therefore, there won't need to be an activation of an emergency action plan. And a less meeting with NIMPs and the Corps, emergency response was brought up, and NIMPs indicated that that action should be taken to protect life and property in the event of a flood this winter. If this action is taken, consultation with NIMPs after the fact would be required. Within the September 20th letter, the Corps, the district also requested the Corps make preparations for this winter in the event of a damage to the project. And finally, the district will include the Santa Paula Creek in one of its flood patrol routes and coordinate with the Corps if any damage is observed over this winter. So future, we're currently in the process of making additional comments to the Corps on the ONM plan and concerns that we have for increased maintenance of the facility. Our next step after that will be putting together a plan that will document in a letter to the Corps that contains what the district expects from the Corps to be able to turn the project over, as well as what response we'll have if they don't do what is expected before the project is turned over. And that will include expectations of communications up at the chain of command at the Corps to headquarters, as well as support from the federal representatives and senators. And I think that's where I'll turn it over to Tully, because I think what we really need is the political support, both from the city and from your board, moving forward to try to convince the Corps to complete the project in a condition that the district can accept and operate and maintain in the future.
Chair Long, members of the board. I'm Tully Clifford. I'm the director of the Watershed Protection District. And I recognize this is a bit of a painful presentation. We give a lot of technical information with a political overlay to it, highlighting the difficulties that we have dealing with two federal agencies that are giving us different opinions and different directions in the same facility, thereby severely limiting what we can do. As you know, at this stage, basically what we can do is stand on top of the road and look in and say, yeah, it looks fine, or it doesn't look fine. And that's the extent of what we can do. We care for the city of Santa Paula. We want to make sure that we have a facility here that is operating correctly. We would like to take over a facility from the US Army Corps of Engineers that is operating correctly, that is built correctly, and we will continue to strive to work with them as well as now. as well as National Marine Fisheries Services, to bring this facility into better condition to enable us to take it over, to move it through the future and find condition. And we look for your assistance, assistance from the City of Santa Paula to support our efforts.
Okay. Did everyone follow that? It just, I asked for this presentation because I know that this area is of great concern to the community, and to really know both the history and where we are today. As I said, with the picture with the new fish ladder, I was there for the dedication, and then obviously there for the destruction of it. And it's a piece of the problem, but it's not the entire problem. And it is something that's been very frustrating to my office and to the professionals here, and certainly will continue to work with you, and I will certainly call on the City of Santa Paula to see what do we need in the way of a letter to move this forward, to get some resolution to it, because we think that we've taken a couple steps forward and then you get a step back. That's been the unfortunate part. We were successful, and it really was a lot of hard work and community engagement, again, from Santa Paula to get the, we had to use a specific language to do some repairs in the Santa Paula Creek that, a biological, environmental repair of the creek. We could, anyway, we got some work done there, enough, but not enough to advance it to where it needs to be. So. Any questions, Board members? Dare you ask a question?
We have plans.
Do I have cards on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, please.
I appreciate the wildlife, the fish ladder, and everything else, but why can't the City of Santa Paula fix the sidewalks? That's very important, but us old people, we fall, we trip, we can't get our wheelchairs going, so maybe that should be a little bit more priority than the fish ladder. And where's the water? And where's the fish?
Thank you, sir. The mayor heard you, and we heard you.
Two city council people.
Yes, and we heard you. So that is a presentation that gave us an update on where the Santa Paula Creek stands. So we'll continue, we'll take the next steps and continue to push on it. It is very frustrating, and I don't know that that completely addressed Mr. Elliott's question as to the mouth, where it intersects with the mouth of the Santa Clara, which has been for years another issue we have with the Corps. It's certainly connected, but that's more with the Army Corps, that piece of it. But we should, let's meet again, let's meet again, let's meet and talk about that so we can reply to Mr. Elliott, too. Okay, receiving file on that, unless there are any questions or other comments? Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, aye. Aye, all right. Moving quickly ahead, item 17, Public Safety Realignment Implementation. Mark Varela, our Chief Probation Officer, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Chair Long, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. All right, see if I can work this. Okay, Brian, so let me just press this, correct? Okay. Well, it's nice to be here in Santa Paula. Driving in here reminded me all the days I was a line probation officer working in the community of Santa Paula and loved.
Pull the mic up a little bit there.
It's on now. So I'm here before your Board to give you an update on our realignment implementation plan for this year, and also to ask that you receive and file the report that has been submitted to you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to quickly do a little overview of Assembly Bill 109 without going into too many details, signed into law by the Governor in April of 2011, went into effect in October of 2011, and as you know, made some significant changes to our adult criminal justice system here in the state, which includes redefining what a felony is here in the state of California. In addition to that, it realigned traditional state functions from to local county government, which included the housing of state prison inmates in our local custodial facilities. It created a new category of offender called the post-release community supervision offender, which I'll refer to as PRCS, and it also created a new sentencing option for the court called mandatory supervision. So I'll refer to that as MS as we go along. It also created a community corrections partnership in each of the 58 counties chaired by the chief probation officer, made up of 14 individuals who represent education, courts, local justice entities, CBOs, victim representation, and a variety of other disciplines. The main function of the CCP is to submit the realignment implementation plan, and our CCP also recommends our annual allocation of funds for board approval. We meet quarterly here in Ventura County, and we have a number of subcommittees that have worked diligently over the last few years to complete some specialized tasks that the CCP has handed down to them. In Ventura County, we collect a lot of local data, and rather than inundate you, especially this evening with a bunch of data, I try to incorporate some information that kind of tells you the story of realignment here in Ventura County since it was implemented. So since the start, and this is data from October 1st of 2011 through September 30th, which was last month, we've had 1,434 individuals, PRCSs, that have been designated or determined to return to Ventura County. Just a couple of the data points there, 142 of these offenders have committed qualifying felony offenses that made them eligible for recommitments back to the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation or State Prison. 382 of these PRCSs made it to one year without any violations of their supervised release or any new criminal offenses. So per statute means that they're automatically terminated from supervision if they hit that one-year mark. We've had 94 offenders who have been eligible for Prop 47 relief, and as a result of the resentencing, which was reduced from a felony down to a misdemeanor required for an automatic termination of supervised release. And as of the end of last month, we had 534 PRCSs that are actively being supervised in Ventura County. Our definition of recidivism here in Ventura County calls for any offense that's counted as a qualifying release, or, excuse me, qualifying return to custody, which counts supervised or violations of supervised release and new crimes. So that is our local definition. I'll get to the state's definition in a little while. But utilizing that definition and looking at the outcomes for our over 1,400 PRCSs, a little bit over a third, 34%, 478, have had no new arrests, either for violations of their supervised release or for new crimes. 20% have been, have had an arrest for a violation of their supervised release, which resulted in a flash incarceration period in our local county jail of 10 days or less, or a revocation of their supervised release. 9% have had an arrest for a new crime only. 31% have had an arrest for a violation of their supervised release and a new crime, and 6% have active bench warrants. So we really don't have an outcome for them at this point in time. An interesting data point that we've been tracking is that most of our arrests occur between 31 and 150 days. So what we're seeing is that a lot of PRCSs are exiting prison, and I think there's an effort to stay on a path where they're staying out of trouble. And for a variety of reasons, we start to see that they begin to not comply with the conditions of their supervised release. And between that period of time, 31 and 150-day range, there's a spike in arrests. After that 150-day period of time, you start to see it trend down. So the challenge for the CCP going forward is trying to find an intervention that'll work with those offenders during that particular timeframe. And we do have something on the horizon.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Of arrests for violation of supervised release, that's not necessarily a crime, but rather just not meeting the requirements of their probation?
It could be a variety of things. Flash incarceration was written into legislation. We use it in the probation world as a response to a behavior that we want stopped. So it could be a positive drug test, it could be failure to report for treatment, it could be failure reports at probation, it could be a variety of things. And we utilize the 10-day period in custody as sort of a get-your-attention to try to get folks to get back on that right path. So that's how we utilize flash incarceration here in Ventura County as a response. Now, if we start to see that becoming a pattern, then we can look at revocation, which is a little bit more serious of a reaction from us.
And Mark, if I could ask, so these numbers that have come out like this, is this what you expected? Were you expecting different, or did you even have an expectation, not knowing?
Well, certainly when realignment came, it was first thought that these were low-level offenders coming out of state prison, and we were going to see maybe a less sophisticated offender coming out of state prison. Now, what we've seen is a more sophisticated offender coming out of state prison. So I think if you were to ask me prior to realignment, I would have thought that we would have had a higher percentage of those individuals without any new arrests. But based on the profile of offender that we're seeing coming out of state prison, which is much more sophisticated, criminality records are much deeper, as is their substance abuse and their history of violence, it is a much more challenging population than I had anticipated. So with the knowledge that I have right now, the numbers don't surprise me as much as they did when realignment first.
Were you saying because of what they learned in state prison, or just because you thought of who went there originally?
Well, what made an offender eligible for PRCS supervision is because they went to prison on a non-non-non, which was a non-serious, non-violent, non-sex offense case. So their commitment offense was something that made them qualify for PRCSs, but what we're finding out is that a lot of these individuals, some of which had spent a majority of their adult life in custodial facilities. So the qualifying offense was a little bit lower than a serious felony or violent felony, but their histories were very sophisticated. And some of the individuals that we were getting were folks that had gone through our local systems and had failed at probation, resulting in a prison commitment. So coming out, we were, it seems that it was a much more sophisticated, harder offender coming out.
Were the judges taking into consideration their prior offenses, et cetera, and likely sending them to state prison, and then even though it was a non-non-non, it was a, that wouldn't have a first offender get sent to state prison, a non-non-non for somebody, and this was their third offense, getting sent to state prison and then being released because they were non-non-non?
Yes. I think a lot of our local courts put a lot of emphasis on prior performance on probation. So we were seeing a lot of offenders, if they had a poor prior performance on probation, which means that we used a lot of our local resources to try to get the offender on the right path. The offender didn't comply, they would get sent to state prison prior to realignment hitting. So a lot of them were coming out with that qualifying offense, but had a long history of non-compliance on probation.
Is there any possibility of an adjustment to state realignment that would take into consideration their history in probation? So, I mean, a non-non-non that had no history of performing poorly in probation, sounds like an ideal candidate to be released, a non-non-non who has failed at probation over and over again, seems much more risky to put into this. Any possibility of that?
Yeah, because it sounds interesting, but would the judge probably have not put them in state if they would have had not that history? Maybe that's the difference? Because if you had a non-non-non, you had done something locally, but maybe they had a history is what got them there?
Yeah, I think that was taken into consideration upon sentencing to state prison. So to get back to your question, Supervisor Bennett, I haven't been made aware of any changes that are being recommended on that. We've had a number of realignment cleanup bills that have gone through, but nothing that addresses that particular issue, and I don't expect that to be happening in the future.
Just in summary, 40% of those released commit a crime, at least?
Forty, well, 9% a crime only, and then 31% have committed a violation of supervised release and a new crime. So yeah, approximately 40%, correct?
So I was just adding, 31 in 9 get 40% are committing crimes, and the types of crimes that they're committing?
I'm going to get to that. I have a screen that talks a little bit about those offenses. So the state has come up with a, last year came up, the Board of State and Community Corrections had come up with a different definition, a statewide definition of recidivism that looks at convictions. So we're in the process of collecting data on that. So the next update to your Board will include that definition of recidivism, as well as our local definition of recidivism, so we can include them side by side.
And before this realignment, these folks would not be released at all? Is that right?
No, they would be released. These are all folks that would have come back in our community anyway. The difference is that they would have come back on state parole, which meant that they were managed by state parole agents, still the responsibility of the state versus now, which is now the local responsibility. So these 1,400 PRCSs were slated to come back to Ventura County regardless. It's just that we're now responsible for them.
And they may be coming back faster because of the pressures of getting them out of the state system.
I wonder if that rate is higher than if they are on parole as opposed to on probation with the county?
Are.
The percentage of, I mean, the crime is incredibly high. 40% are committing crimes again. I just don't know if that is higher than if they were not released to the county but were under the state parole.
Well, the data that I've seen, at least recidivism data, when the state was managing these offenders, was at about 70% recidivism. So not a big difference, we're still talking about the same population challenges.
Thank you. Just a question I have, too, is when your probation officers are managing these folks, they're doing more frequent visits and more unannounced visits, so I think from a safety standpoint, there's a lot more reassurance with the local probation officers managing these folks, too.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. Parole caseloads could range from one parole agent to 70 offenders prior to realignment, unless they were high-risk sex offenders. The caseloads were a lot smaller. In our county, our caseloads are capped at 40. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our probation police teams, but there are frequent visits, they're unannounced, so we're out there a lot more. The intervention, the contact with the offenders is a lot more frequent than they would have gotten on parole, which could result in more contacts and more actions on our part to stop any behavior that we happen to see quickly.
Last one before we go on real quick. So if you look at our numbers, and you have 58 different people doing what you're doing, how do we compare what's happened? Is this pretty similar across the board?
I think it's pretty similar across the board. There's a lot of counties that do things a little bit differently. I think here in Ventura County, we have a culture where we put public safety high priority. So I think you're going to see us here in Ventura County being a lot more active and catching offenders doing something that's in violation of their supervised release. So we're pretty aggressive when it comes to that, but we also spend a lot of time referring offenders to community-based organizations and treatment, and I'll get into that in a little while. So I think the intervention level, at least here in Ventura County, is pretty high. And some of my, discussing a lot of this with some of my peers in the state, I think you'll find wide ranges of how folks are doing.
Right, so somebody says we have a little bit less recidivism rate, maybe they're just not as hands-on as you are with this.
Yes, could be the case. So I'm going to drill down a little bit more in getting to Supervisor Park's question. With this population, we've had over 1,200 jail admissions. Now, this could be a PRCS offender who's been admitted into county jail more than once, and we have a number of those individuals, and it could be for multiple charges. So probation, we're tracking the most serious booking charge, and this is how it breaks out. 55% of the jail admissions are drug and alcohol-related, could be anything from drug sales to DUI. 13% theft-related, 7% is violence-related, and that includes domestic violence. 7% resisting evading officer, 4% weapons-related, and 14%. 4% weapons-related, and 14% just a variety of other crimes. If you look at the level of the most serious booking charge, 42% are felony crimes, 57% are misdemeanor, and 1% is unknown, because those arrests occurred outside Ventura County. So that data isn't readily available to us.
Madam Chair, Mark, what is the average age of those individuals?
That's a really good question. I would say, last time I looked, it's going to be between the ages of 25 and 45, in that age range.
Is it a safe, is it a correct assumption that most of the drug and alcohol-related offenses are misdemeanors and not felonies?
Yes, correct. And the largest misdemeanor arrest crime is violation of 11550, which is under the influence of a controlled substance, which is a misdemeanor offense. So when we come in contact with these individuals in the community, and our law enforcement agencies know who these folks are, so there's regular contact. And if they're found to be under the influence of a controlled substance, they can be booked on that particular charge.
So the 55% of the 677 individuals are violations?
The 55%, the 677 were arrests for
Individual.
New charges.
New charges.
On drug or alcohol-related offenses.
Oh, okay.
Can I add?
We'll wait till the end.
Yeah, wait till the presentation.
Let's wait till the end of the presentation.
Okay, so I talked a little bit, with the changes in the penalties for non-serious, non-violent, non-sex offense felonies, mandatory, I talked a little bit about mandatory supervision being a new sentencing option for the court. And basically mandatory supervision, the judge has a few different sentencing options for these individuals that go to court. And these are folks who are committing felony offenses, and the felony offense is no longer prison-eligible felony. So the court can, as a disposition, order the individual to a jail-only sentence. They could order them to do a split sentence for mandatory supervision, which is a portion of their time in jail followed by community supervision period. Our court also uses suspended prison sentences. And then there's actually been four sentences with no jail altogether. So 71% of the individuals that are going through the court system as part of this new sentencing scheme are serving jail-only sentences. And this creates, this is a problematic issue, especially for our sheriff's office, because we have individuals that are going to county jail, serving lengthy periods of time, occupying jail beds for a very, very long period of time. Last time I checked, the longest jail sentence that we've seen is 12 years, and I know Ron Nelson's here, I don't know, we got 15 years now. So these are people that are serving, they're ineligible to go to prison, so they're going into our county jails for long periods of time.
Because if you had gone back six, seven years ago, Ron, the average time would have been 19 days, and now what's the average time probably? 17? Wow. Wow.
So as a result, you'll see our jail population starting to go up with individuals who are serving significant periods of time in our local county jails. 26% are experiencing the mandatory supervision, which are the split sentences. Now, in an attempt to increase the number of split sentences that the court can order, there was this change that went into effect January of this year that required the presumption for mandatory supervision unless the court found it in the interest of justice not to order them to split sentence. So we've seen, at least since January, an increase in our mandatory supervision cases. We've gone up 42%. So we've seen an uptick in that. And our jail-only sentences went from 71% overall down to 53%. So that's, so that's good news. We have, as of the end of last month, 126 active mandatory supervision offenders out in the community right now being supervised by probation agency. So if you look at our funding, our state funding that we receive as a result of AB-109, you'll see that our initial year of funding, we had about $5.9 million, and that was over a period of nine months in 2012, or the fiscal year 1112, which represented 1.52% of the entire state allocation to AB-109. The next year, we went up significantly, full-year funding, and we peaked in fiscal year 1314 at over $19 million coming to Ventura County, which roughly was 1.72% of the entire state allocation. Now, that has been trending down beginning last fiscal year and again this fiscal year because there's a change in the formula that was recommended by the Realignment Allocation Committee, which was a combination of base and growth. So base was determined by offender caseloads and crime stats. For the county, growth was more performance-based, based on your probation revocations and your state prison commitments. So you can move up in terms of growth funding or move down based on your performance locally.
Excuse me, could you just clarify what moves you up or down in terms of performance standards? In other words, if you're having more people arrested, you're doing a better job of monitoring, you're moving up or you're moving down?
If you have more probation revocations and more state commitments, your funding comes down. It's incentivized funding to provide counties or encourage counties to keep people locally, work with them, and not send them to state prison. If that makes sense.
I can ask real quick, Mark. So I look at that, and it's $2.5 million difference. So what happened here? What did we do? You've still got these people in the street. What did you do for funding? How did you, how did that adjust?
Well, we adjusted by making some cuts. And so I'll talk to you a little bit about how we got down to where we needed to get down. So our allocation for this year was, coming from the state, was 16, roughly about $16.6 million. Our AB-109 program in here in Ventura County is over $19 million. So in order to cover that cost, we pulled $2.6 million out of our local community corrections account reserve in order to get to that $19 million. And this is the allocation for this fiscal year. You see the sheriff's, you see the sheriff's office is 8.1 million, probation 6.1, behavioral health roughly about 1.8, district attorney, public defender, local law enforcement, and we have an allocation to our community-based organizations of about 1.25 million.
How big is the reserve, the LCC?
The reserve? Frank, you got to help me out with this one?
It's about, with 4 million in transition money, it'll be about $5 million.
As we have left.
You have 5 million, 5 million left after taking out the 2.6 million?
No, there's only 1 million. I took out the 2.6. In October, later this month, we're going to get an additional $4 million.
An additional $4 million?
Yeah, for transition because of what happened with the RAC formula, because they know that a lot of counties got hit very severely, so they have allocated additional one-time funding for those counties in Ventura County.
So that's going to be one-time funding, and then we're going to
Yes.
Be back in this position again.
And that's the good news coming up. A couple of things. The latest projections by the RAC committee, we're looking at an additional 1.3 million more than what we expect for next fiscal year, which puts us at about 17.3 million. And then the one-time assistance that we're going to get from the state. And that one-time funding goes to counties who experience a drop because of the new formula that was done. So we're actually going to see about $5 million in our reserve next fiscal year.
I would just say too, that the trend, as we look at it, is starting to look a little bit better. There was this drop, the transition formula. Transition funding will help, and then the Safety Partners share probation, everybody did a great job of coming together to lower that. But the formula, the funding formula, the revenues are starting to look better
Yes.
in the next few years, so.
But doesn't, like people like Ron, doesn't he have an issue if he's gone from 19 days to average 75 days, he's got more people in there, doesn't his cost continue to grow?
Well, yes, and that happened from the get-go.
Yeah, and so now is it getting worse on him?
So that's been the issue of managing those.
Yeah, well, you see what our sheriff's, how covered his costs.
Yeah. And that covers it?
So far.
So far.
And the idea is to have our program costs match what our state allocation is and keep a pretty healthy reserve. Now, we have to be able to help our sheriff's office out by creating, performing better and creating some jail alternative programs and doing a better job managing people out in the community, so that way we don't have, we don't see that continued influx of people entering our county jail system. So this is going to be a really comprehensive approach to keep that jail population down, and that's what we're all keeping an eye on.
And the community-based organizations are, who? I know who, before the public to know who some of them are.
The CBOs.
That's in your next one, okay.
That's in my next slide here. And I'll actually start out with that. And I just wanted to hit these approaches, because we've done a lot since realignment has started. And I'm going to start with the Core Connections. Core standing for community reentry. And our CBOs have come to the table and have done a great job trying to address our gaps in our programs. So as a result, they've implemented three evidence-based approaches: moral recognition, therapy, parenting for offenders, and reentry case management. So they've come to the table, identified what the gaps are, and are working hand-in-hand with the realignment organizations to provide valuable services. The referrals are coming from the probation agency, and they're taking these folks in and providing a lot of great services out in the community. So it's actually been a fantastic venture. The MRT program is provided by Alternative Action Programs. Our parenting classes are provided by the Coalition. And our reentry case management is provided by CSI, Community Solutions Incorporated. Community Solutions Interventions. Yeah, I just saw the CSI. Some of the other programs that we, and approaches that we've implemented, our reentry court and pre-trial program, that have been in existence since September of 2013, 115 total screenings for our reentry court, which is really modeled after our other collaborative court programs in Ventura County. About 38% of those total screenings have been accepted into the program. We can manage 15 to 20 offenders at any given time. We've had three individuals that have graduated with three more pending this year. Our pre-trial program, we've seen a lot of great success with. We have had, since September of 2013, 339 individuals released on pre-trial supervision. Of those 339, 94% have remained arrest-free while they're out on pre-trial, and 86% have appeared for all court appearances. You can see that the sheriff has done a fabulous job expanding the custodial programs, particularly our Todd Road Jail, now offering MRT at Todd Road, have beefed up substance abuse programs, education, GED prep, life skills. Done a great job in reentry planning and providing services for the transitional-age youth, all in our jail system. Our probation police supervision teams continue to be successful. We have three contracts with cities, Oxnard, Ventura, and Simi Valley, which provide a police officer that is co-located in our probation regional offices. And we have a sheriff's deputy that's based out of our Ventura regional office. Our state-recognized STEPS program, Specialized Training and Employment Project for Success, has been featured on a CSAC best practices video. Over 300 referrals to STEPS with 94 individuals placed in employment since 2012. And we're talking about the people that are the hardest to place in employment. So that's fantastic outcomes. We offer comprehensive substance abuse treatment from intensive outpatient to detox to residential. And our ADP folks are co-located in probation regional offices, so they can help do triage and assessment. Two-tiered mental health services provided by Telecare, intensive outpatient, mental health services, along with residential services for the acute. And this just started, and I talked to Todd Howith a couple of days ago about it. The public defender now is assisting offenders with alternative placement services. These are folks coming out of our county jails who have, do not have a place to live or stable place, and the public defender's office is sending in sentencing specialists out of their offices to help individuals find jobs. Working hand-in-hand with the Todd Road Jail reentry team and probation to make sure they have places to go and link them into homes upon release. And then I talked about our Core Connections. So these are some of the things that we've put into place to help with this population. Some of the new stuff that we're looking at implementing this fiscal year, your board approved the contract with Eval Core, which is doing a comprehensive evaluation of all of our AB-109 services. They started in January of this year, gave a pretty good initial report after six months, and are going to be assisting us in identifying some data points and tracking success and measuring success. And I should have a good, in detail, report next time I report on realignment. We have a committee, a subcommittee, working on a dashboard project, which again is working hand-in-hand with Eval Core to identify data points and be able to assist us in reporting and evaluation. We have a data reporting center that is going to be opening up in the next couple of months. It's going to be based in Ventura. Probation's going to oversee the contract with a provider, a vendor, that's going to offer services, out-of-custody services, that target significant risk factors for our population, hoping to put a dent in that 31- to 150-day group. Restorative Justice is the fourth evidence-based approach that's going to be provided by our CBOs. We had a summit in June of 2015 that was attended by about 180 people. And we just are putting on the finishing touches of our RFP, and we have a tentative November release date, and community-based organizations will put in applications. Something that I was made aware of last week was a grant that the sheriff and HSA was able to secure. The LEAP Initiative, which stands for Linking to Employment Activities Pre-Release. It's very STEPS-like, working with offenders while in custody, linking them to employment and employers prior to release. That grant goes through June of 2017. And something I did not have up there, but I want to mention, and that is our recidivism reduction grants. These are state funds that were sent to the counties to look at funding grassroots, community services for this population. In Ventura County, we have $375,000, of which up to 50% of the funds can be used for juvenile population. Probation will be responsible for putting together RFPs that'll go out to community bidders. So a lot of good things and exciting stuff happening as we move forward. Just a few challenges I want to talk about. We spent some time talking about our offender profile. The individuals that we're seeing are high-risk, high-need, with some pretty significant criminal histories. And it's taken a lot of effort and very creative approaches in order to get inside and crack those real difficult exteriors. Again, causing a lot of problems in our custodial settings. These are individuals that spent a significant period of time in state prison facilities, and now are coming and serving a lot of local time in our local jails. And with that, we're starting to see some of the problems that you see in state prison here in our local jails. Don't quite know what the impact of Prop 47 is at this point. We do have some anecdotal data on Prop 47, but in terms of long-term impact, not too sure where it's going at this point. We do know that there are a number of offenders out there that were getting services because they were on felony probation. Probation means access to services that are no longer being supervised in the community, and we have to keep an eye on that moving forward. Working within our budget and trying to get our program to match our state allocation's going to be challenging, so we all have to work within our budget. We also want to maximize the growth allocations and make sure that our performance increases so we can try to maximize that allocation that's coming from the state. Using Eval Core's evaluation to make data-driven decisions and making sure that we're putting our resources to programs that are actually working because we're measuring them. We know that our courts have been impacted, especially since Prop 47, so we have to make sure that we continue keeping an eye on the impact that the district attorney and the public defender's offices experience as a result of the increase public defender's offices experience as a result of the increased workload. Finding more housing options for inmates is always something that we need to really pay attention to. Continue to search for more jail alternative programs. And one thing that I'm not excited to say, but I think the writing's on the wall, and I think we're looking at more criminal justice reform in the next couple years. Not too sure what it's gonna look like at this point in time, but all indications, things that I've heard at the state level, is that we might see some more coming down the pike. So, we just have to be prepared.
With less money.
With less money. Or more money, you don't know. So, that concludes my presentation. Just hoping to obtain any questions.
Just one, as you assimilate all that down to one thing, you have more people you've brought in, you have more people on the streets. Are crime levels moving up?
That's a good question. I think I've seen varied reports, especially with our, from our local law enforcement agencies, that crime, specifically theft-related crime, is on the rise. It's hard to pin it on any particular thing, if it's Prop 47, if it's realignment. You know, it's, I can't say that it's connected to any one thing.
Yeah. Talking to the DA, I don't know if he could say it's one thing or the other, or whatever, but it just told me that it's just starting to rise around the county, and you expect that with a lot of people on the street. And maybe Ron has some...
Just anecdotally, around the county, you can hear some of the police executives around the county complaining about their crime rates, particularly in the property-related crimes.
Yeah. Yeah. Not the major stuff, but just property, theft, to get drugs, and that kind of thing.
Down to Los Angeles, they're talking about major, you know, assault-type crimes. But locally here, we're seeing a lot more property-related crimes.
Right.
And it's hard to say whether it's realignment-related, as the chief here said, or if it's more Prop 47-related. But there, I think everyone's in agreement that there is some increase in it. We'll know more at the end of the year.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Mark, on the eval, on the evaluation, is there a base you're gonna use or go from, or is it comps with other cities or comparable counties, I mean, counties? Or how are we gonna evaluate, you know, the services?
Well, they spent the first six months of their contract doing extensive interviews with the CCP members and taking a look at all of our programs and trying to determine a base level, and then trying to measure from there. So, I think that's how they're gonna come around doing it. The thing about Eval Core is that they're very familiar with our county. They've had contracts with behavioral health, with ADP. They know our population. They know our systems. So, they're gonna do the best that they can to try to come up with a baseline and then measure from there. And then, build something for us, so that way, especially through the data dashboard that we're gonna have, where we can monitor the data points that we want to and be able to report out, so that way, we're all saying the same thing. It's really important.
Great. Great job. That's a lot of work. Tremendous amount of work.
Yeah. You know, we have great folks out there. And that's the one thing that I really enjoy about the CCP is that here in Ventura County, we have a culture of coming together and handling things. And, you know, none of us were too excited about realignment when it first hit, but I think we rolled up our sleeves, jumped in there. And again, a lot of our success in terms of managing this population is because of the support that we have from your board. I think you guys have been great in terms of supporting us in all these new approaches that we're trying to implement here. And it's a big culture change. We've been doing a lot of this stuff on the juvenile side for years, but then the adults weren't doing much prior to realignment. So, now, we're starting all these new things, and it's a major shift. And I think it really helps to have the support of your board, to have the support of the CEO's office, and, you know, it makes things a lot easier. And just, I wanna thank Frank. Frank's sitting back here, but he...
Thank you, Mr. ...
You know, Frank, he chairs our budget subcommittee. And when you're talking about $920,000 worth of cuts, all to government program departments, it's tough work. So, I just wanted to thank him. He's put a lot of time and energy to understand the formulas and understand the trends, and he's done a fantastic job for us.
Good job.
And the members of the CCP are?
The members of the CCP?
No.
Here, or just...
No, no. For the public to know.
For the public to know, I will try to do my best to have all of them, but the executive committee of the CCP is made up of the sheriff, the public defender, the district attorney, the chief probation officer, the presiding judge of the Superior Court, the director of behavioral health, and the local police chief, which is Chief Jerry Williams at this point. And then, the other members that make up the CCP include the CEO, includes the director of HSA, the drug and alcohol program administrator, which is Patrick Zerati, and includes a representative who represents the interests of victims, which we're looking to fill that position with the retirement of Catherine Dugan and one other individual, a CBO representative, which is Caroline Pritjatell Sutton with the Coalition.
Okay.
So, that is our CCP.
I knew it was, so, yeah.
And I have to thank my team. We have two people here, Chief Deputy Patricia Oliveras and Division Manager Tim Dowler. I mean, they...
Thank you.
They put it, they keep it together on the probation end, so, since they're here...
Thank you for being here.
... sat through. I had to recognize that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that report. Our public member, you had a specific question, sir? Or no?
No.
Did you, no?
I'm ready to answer my own question.
Oh, okay.
But the majority of the arrests that the police make are for minor, minor situations, alcohol container, possession of a little bit of pot, you know, weed. All those statistics up there, they're not felon. They don't shoot anybody. They don't kill anybody. They don't rob banks. They don't rape anybody.
Well, that's maybe...
Anyway, the numbers, including all these numbers, there's not telling you why. Where the numbers come from, Sheriff Page, you know?
Okay.
Are you the police officer? I'm asking you a question.
Where these stats come from?
Are most of them all minor situations such as alcohol...
Now, these are folks who are coming out of state prison, sir, so they've already been convicted of an offense.
Why do you say county at first?
Well, we're now the county taking care of them. They've been released by the state to the county for us to take care of them.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
These are high-risk offenders. It's a certain population. It doesn't include just folks of the general public.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Varela.
Thank you.
And we'll do a receive and file on that.
Motion. So, Lou.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for sticking around to hear that information. Now, item 19, Supervisor Parks.
This item is to request that the board asks that our Office of Emergency Services includes in its analysis on El Nino, the Santa Susana Field Lab site. Also, I know they're doing a vulnerability analysis of different locations throughout the county, like La Conchita and Camarillo Springs Fire, Long Canyon Fire, also the Santa Clara wastewater treatment area. So, this would just be asking them to contact, I don't know, but we do have Mr. McGowan here, and I'm sorry that we've taken so long to get to the item. I know you've been here for a while. But this would just be asking that they contact the Department of Toxic Substance Control or the State Water Resource Control Board that oversees the outflows from Santa Susana Field Lab and see if they are doing any preparations for El Nino. So, I just ask that that be incorporated in the study. I believe they're coming back in November.
Good evening, Chair Long, board members, Mr. Powers, Mayor Proctor, council members from the city of Santa Paula. Thank you for having me here this evening. And oh, yes, can action this request. We'll integrate this into our planning process. It's a pretty comprehensive planning process that we'll be addressing the board at the beginning of November. Strategy for actioning this request will include us establishing communication with the different responsible parties, of which the field laboratory has federal, state, and private sector entities all involved. So, it's a pretty comprehensive, all-community approach. In addition to that, we'll ensure that emergency operations communications are effective so that in the event of significant winter storms, we can communicate real-time to them. And then, lastly, we'll be inviting them to that board presentation to field any questions that you may have.
Just from standpoint, we called up there because of what Supervisor Parks had, and they've already do it, you know, they're under the permit of water quality and the whole bit, and they've gone through and done a lot. But I think they'll have that information pretty handily available for you, so it wouldn't be too extensive for you to have to spend, you know, lots of hours and hours to do that because I know that they've worked pretty hard up there, so it was a good point.
And it'd be good, I think, for the community to know.
Yeah.
So, with that, I'll just make a recommendation, a motion that we do incorporate this site also in the vulnerability analysis. It will be.
There's a motion?
I don't know.
Forward?
No.
A little frickin'. A little frickin'. Oh, the candy's gone. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Got a question, Mr. Bennett?
I just wanna say, I appreciate your request and I support the support going forward. I just wanna make sure we don't put staff in untenable spots. So, if there's a situation where you can't get the information or whatever, I don't think we're expecting you to suddenly, I mean, you either have it or you don't have it. But you can't, you can't between now and the first of November.
Give us the assessment of what's there.
And if they don't have one, maybe this will inspire them to have a plan for El Nino.
I mean, yeah, we called up to spend some time on the phone with what they did and do, and they've got it pretty extensive because under that Water Quality Act, they've gotta know every water that comes off that site, every, so it's pretty clear.
Okay. Everyone supported that action? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you enjoyed your evening in Santa Paula.
Oh, yeah. My pleasure.
Madam Chair, for the record, Abe Weitzberg also submitted comment letters that would be distributed to your board.
That was this? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, okay. Item 20, Supervisor Foy.
Yes. We have an opportunity to, oh, there he is. He did it for us, the mental health board, that we have the opportunity to have one of our finest, who's everybody knows and loves, Ron Nelson, doing, I would ask that we appoint him. And I know Janice is very excited about that happening.
Okay.
He's your fan, and so I appreciate your willingness to step up with all the other things you've got. You wanna make a comment about it? That'd be great because I know you've got a great interest in...
Yeah. Thank you very much. No, I'm very excited about the opportunity that you're presenting. Been in law enforcement for a little over 28 years, had a lot of opportunity to encounter folks with various types of mental illnesses, both in the streets and now in the custody environment where I am at at the Todd Road Jail. And it's totally fascinating to me. There's a lot of, I know there's a lot of resources out there, and I think I bring a lot of experience to the table, and I really, it's an honor.
And I appreciate you willing to do it because there's no question that he sees so much of this, from being on the street to when they're in custody. You're never gonna change until you get all these resources pulled together and a person can sit at that level and see that. I think it's tremendous. I appreciate you, Ron, willing to do this.
I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago up north. It was about mental health and corrections. And the things that we are experiencing here isn't any different than anywhere else in the nation, whether you're a 12-bed facility or a 3,500-bed facility. Everybody has that issue, so...
Yeah. Well, thank you again. I know you're busy, but you're willing to take this on, so I appreciate it.
Good presentation. Thank you.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
And the second? We have a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. You're on. All right. Correspondents. Correspondents' agenda. Second.
One second. And Madam Chair, before we adjourn, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn memory, and I just found three things for the board members to sign, if I could pass them out real quick. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Motion, second, and the correspondence, all in favor of the correspondence being filed? Say aye. 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 Done. That does then complete our agenda. It's...
Very sweet night. There are my touches, and I'm just having a lovely evening on six times.
Yeah, really, a bad end of the dais. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Thank you, Santa Paula. Mr. Mayor.
Who's the...
Kenny, thank you. It was lovely to be here. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
And who?